Good morning. Can you guys hear me now?
Yes.
Thank you so much. And again, what I was saying when you couldn't hear me is that I'm sorry that we are a little delayed. I said that in these challenging times, the phone rings always at inopportune times, but that was a congressional call that I needed to take for our county. And so we will now proceed if everybody is ready and I get the good to go. So we do call this meeting to order and I'm gabbling us in and would ask at this time that you stand for invocation and please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and to the Texas flag. At this time, Commissioner Chesney, would you like to give invocation?
Certainly. Let us pray. Dear Lord, you are awesome. We thank you for all that you've done for us, for all that you've given us, for all the blessings that you have put in our lives. Lord, we ask that you will watch over us today as we make these decisions, but more so, Lord, we ask that you will watch over our community as these COVID numbers continue to spike. And we pray, Lord, that you will help those that are hospitalized, help those that have lost loved ones find comfort, help all of those that are in the decision-making processes that are going on. Certainly help our county judge as she has to navigate these horrible, horrible waters again, then again, and again. We pray for all of those that she consults and works with and help them make the decisions that will help. Do what we can to keep everyone as safe as possible. Lord, we are grateful for your son, Jesus Christ, and we ask these things in his name. Amen.
Amen. And I'll begin with the pledge, but I'm actually, you know what, I will let Commissioner Gonzalez lead us in the pledge, but I'm also here and I'll just, I try not to have a delay. Commissioner Gonzalez, will you lead and start us off?
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag and allegiance to the Texas one state under God, one indivisible.
Okay, thank you so much. And again, at this time, the time is 9:16 a.m. and I do note for the record that it is August the 11th, 2021. I am working remote today and conducting this remotely, but all other commissioners are present in the courtroom. Is that correct?
Judge, I'm remote. Judge, I'm remote.
You're remote as well. Thank you for the clarification. But all are present in one way or another, and we are definitely have established a quorum. For those of you that are in the courtroom, obviously, that is at 901 North Leopard. That is the county courthouse for Nuances County, and you are located on the third floor. Let's have a safety brief, safety briefing at this time. Is Timothy or Rebecca available?
Rebecca. Good morning, Judge, commissioners, and attendees. Our safety briefing for today, August 11th, is being held in the Nuaces County Commissioners' courtroom. The restrooms are located on the right-hand side of the third-floor atrium past the Human Resources Office. There is a fire extinguisher located at the rear of the courtroom and also five additional fire extinguishers located throughout the atrium area. In the event of a cardiac emergency, an AED is located on the right wall next to the Human Resources Office. Participant for today who will be responsible for dialing 911 will be Connie. Participant CPR certified in attendance will be Dale, and remember, anyone can render aid. In the event of evacuation, our egress route will be slowly down the atrium stairs, proceeding out the doors located on the La Pan Street side of the courthouse and assemble in the parking lot across the street. It is important to stay together. Should there be a need to shelter in place, depending upon the severity of the shelter in place, the courtroom double doors will be secured and remain secure until given further instructions from the Nuaces County Sheriff's Office or other law enforcement agencies. Our guest sanitizer for the day will be Michael. Our safety topic for the month of August again is school safety. Be sure and talk to your children about the importance of wearing their masks, washing their hands, and watching their social distancing. We have current COVID cases in some CCISD schools. Stay alert. Parents and children are trying to get to school. They are all preoccupied with getting to their destinations. Respect the safety concerns of the school. Talk with your child if they do not feel safe at school or guide them who to talk to at school. Above all, be patient and be safe. And this concludes our risk management safety briefing for today. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much, Rebecca, for the safety briefing. Also, at this time, I'm going to need a little help, but the public comment is next, and so I'm going to ask for Tyner to announce public comment as you see it on the sign-up sheet.
Judge, we have three people that signed up this morning. The first person is Larry Furkin, I believe, if I pronounce that correct.
All right, Tyner, if you'd ask them to proceed and for my benefit and for Commissioner Chesney's benefit, if you would make certain that they get close to the mic.
Yes, Larry. If you would go to the podium, please.
Sir, I'm the second on the list. I'm just going to stand up there with him.
Okay, the second on the list is Terry Burgess, and she's going to stand with him.
Yeah, I'm here to discuss the problem ditches that we have. I'm sorry? Is this better without the mask maybe? Here to speak about the problem ditches we have over in, on 1889, 52B, 52, 69, 50, 48, 46, and 44, and there on out to Colleta Creek, not Colleta Creek, Oso Creek, which we've been told where all our ditches drain to. And I've given Connie pictures, and the ditches seem to be pretty good on the county side, and they're taking care of them on 52. But where it starts right there, as you see, that picture starts right there. It robs town where the city limits is, and from there on, if you keep on clicking, some of the pictures are just redundant of just showing where it starts at. And then it continues on to where it gets to where it gets down almost at the Palm Tree Forest, I guess you would call it. Right before there, there's a crossover, and right there, you see, that's where the crossover is, and the debris that's in it, as well as all up and down the ditches. And from 1889, the trees and the debris and the shrubbery that's in the ditch that goes from 1889 to all the way to 69, and it L's over to County Road 44. That ditch has not been cleaned out in the 42 years that I've lived over at 3,600 County Road 50. And continued on, on these pictures that went across 77 and also the Highway 44 and ended up getting a flat tire and couldn't go any further. So don't know who we can talk to other than you guys to help put some pressure on Robstown to take care of their ditches because Nuaces County is taking care of theirs, and Robstown just seems to neglect taking care of from there on, that L portion that goes from 1889 all the way across 69 and then L's over to County Road 44. If we could ask somebody that could put some pressure on Robstown to take care of theirs, or that would be of great help. And who is after it, who's responsible after that? Where does Robstown stop and there, and that's in front of my house, in that area there where it floods on County Road 50? Who is responsible, you know, once it hits Robstown city limits and they're out to Oso Creek? Who's responsible? I'd like to know that.
Excuse me, Tyner? Tyner? Let them know we can't comment.
Right, you're not supposed to.
They're asking.
Yeah.
They can't respond to you during public comment.
They can't respond.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's, that's correct. Sorry, that's. Sorry about that.
You're on two devices, Judge. You need to get rid of both.
Yeah, we're having a technical problem trying to get better video, but we'll have to, we'll have to see what we can do. We may need like a, just a two, three-minute recess to get us back on. But if you can hear me, I just wanted to remind the audience, unfortunately, we cannot respond during public comment. There's actually some technical rules where you can respond, but just be aware that we will respond in other ways, either through written communication, contacting you after this meeting. All of your comments are being weighed very seriously, and we're all taking notes. It's just that this particular portion of the, of the agenda is you get a chance to talk to us, and then we will be able to, at a different time, address this situation. And I can tell you, if you'll stay with us, it happens in letter H1 under General Information Reports. You'll notice on the agenda that it talks about flooding and drainage. So again, if that helps, Commissioner, those are the rules that we typically operate under. But you may continue, sir.
Hey, I've got, besides what I've given Connie on a, on a thumb drive that she's downloaded, I'm also willing to give it, give that thumb drive for somebody else to download it if they want to. I've got pictures here as, as well, the same pictures, but I, I think it's, all the pictures you can see there of where the problem areas are at, and I think on the back of these pictures are noted where.
Yes, ma'am. I'm Terry Burgess, and I also live on 3,600 County Road 50. And what we see a lot of is there's a lot of dumping in the area. It's a lot of disrespectful people. There's chairs, there's playpens, there's bags of trash and tires. And it's unfortunate that people do that, and I feel for the people that have to clean up after. We clean up as much as we can along the county road. We even mow the county road. So if we could get help with that, we'd greatly appreciate it. That is it for us, ma'am. Thank you so much for your time.
Next judge signed up is, at last, Chris Garcia.
And as soon as he finishes cleaning, you may proceed. Just remember to repeat your name and address for the clerk.
Chris Garcia, 701 North Hackberry, Bishop, Texas.
You may proceed, sir.
Thank you. Judge and commissioners, I appreciate your time and attention this morning, especially considering the times that we've recently been in. I came before this court in May asking if Nuaces County Mental Health and Intellectual Disabilities Mobile Services, like the Mobile Crisis Outreach Team or Crisis Intervention Teams are available to those needing help in Bishop. I was hoping that this would be answered, this question would be answered in future agendas. So far, from what I observe, it has not been. In the meantime, I called Bishop Police Department and asked how many times in the past year had the department referred mental health-related dispatches to Nuaces County Mental Health and Intellectual Disabilities? They replied zero. This tells me that county resources for those needing mental health help are not being used in Bishop. But what the police department does do, they're great at arresting offenders. In addition to that, they post their pictures on social media. Imagine the stigma of not having a roof over your head in a small town like Bishop, the place where you grew up, then arrested for trespassing, trespassing because you wanted to lay your head down and rest somewhere. Well, this is exactly what's occurring in Bishop. This is occurring, and I have, I have my friend's permission to talk about him. This is occurring with my friend Donnie. I'm not going to use his last name. Donnie does not have a place to stay like we do. He sleeps in an inlet to an abandoned building in historic Bishop downtown. You can often find him at the Bishop Square by the traffic light at the intersection of Business 77 and Main Street. I've seen Donnie before and was not sure of his situation until I came across a social media post in a Bishop community Facebook group. This is what the community of Bishop had to say about Donnie back in March. One person wrote, "I'm wondering about the man I've seen sitting and laying on the ground in front of the bakery building." Another person said, "He was in a ditch on all fours barking at the sun the last time I saw him." Another person put, "I bet it's the same guy I reported years ago screaming to himself in the parking lot of Bishop Primary School." Someone else said, "Oh, he's my cousin. He's on synthetics." And I tried to help him, but he kicked my car. Another person put, "Do they pick him up?" He should be put in jail and sleep it off. I can understand the comments from the community. They're insensitive, but they don't understand health, mental health distress. But this court does. This court understands the nature of mental health distress because I've heard you talk about it, and you talk about it constructively, which is why I wonder why Nuaces County Mental Health and Intellectual Disabilities does not go to Bishop. Every morning, Donnie has a routine of writing these very words, and I'm going to read you. He writes these words on a large poster, and he hangs them around town down Main Street. You can see them. And I'm going to read you what he writes because he's given me permission to. "Jesus Christ, baby child, Donnie Rivera, boy and girl are living there sleepwalking. Me left foot look up that way every time and every five minutes. Do Christ's spell undo the people's lives and earth and my insides life to use Christ's spell again? Everything off the people's life to the left foot under control. Everything off my life to the left foot under control. Earth off to the left foot under control. Jurisdiction the earth the way Bishop, Texas, Nuaces County. I live here. It's my hometown. I'm the owner. Make Jake Clean number trounce, bag of money, straight shot to get groove on. Jesus Christ, baby child, Donnie." He takes pride in his hometown. Now, with my help, Donnie was able, with some help, I, Donnie was able to see a doctor at the innovative readiness clinic that was in Bishop this, a couple months ago, a few months ago. He sat with me at his spot while we made an appointment for him after that with Amistad Robstown to start working on his health and wellness. As I pointed out before in, in May regarding the improved mental health services, like the Mobile Crisis Outreach Teams and Community Intervention, Crisis Intervention Teams that are available, we know they're out there, and I'm asking this court to keep your promise to be attentive to the mental health needs of all Nuaces County, including Bishop and including Donnie. I'm asking this court for justice for Donnie. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia.
I'd just sign in, Judge.
Yes, I just want to make sure that Tyner reads the next public comment, and then we'll put you at the, at the conclusion. I do want to, I do want to just at least remark that, again, public comment is not a time to answer, but there will be an opportunity, perhaps in another agenda item to address this important issue if, if that's what you're going to do. I know, I know how tempting it is. I also want to reach out and say all the things that I bet you want to say, but again, public comment is not, is not the time. But we will sign you up.
Thank you.
The.
Judges, the gentleman just may want to wait around in case that.
That's what I was, exactly.
Yeah, references, right.
And I don't know, I'm looking in the courtroom. He may have walked out. Oh, there he is. Okay, great. So.
Just tell him not to leave for a second.
Hang on. Tyner, would you please let us know if there's anybody else?
No, that's it. It's, except Commissioner Gonzalez asked me to sign his name.
Okay, no problem. And I see no individual online, but I will ask again if there is anybody who wishes to make public comment, if you would display your hand signal on your laptop. That would be great. Okay, seeing none, I'll ask Commissioner Gonzalez. But again, if it's in response, as you know, we cannot do that at this time. Go ahead.
What do you mean, I can't respond? My comments are my comments. I understand that Mr. Garcia's point, and you know, is very well taken. I, as the commissioner of that area, you know, the IRT, when we had it, was open door policy to anybody that wanted to come in, and they were, they were allowed to come in for the mental health. And also, I know that for a fact that I should have assigned him to some kind of referral, and that referral should have continued on, you know, but if it's, those referrals are not being met, then I, I as the commissioner probably need to be aware of. But anybody out there that is having some issues, I'll be glad to meet with them on a one-to-one basis. Thank you.
Okay, I will move on at this time, seeing no further public comment. We are going to move to resolutions, proclamations, and orders. The first is in support of the local turtle release program, and I would direct your attention to Tyner at the podium. Tyner, I also was reminded that, I know that tax assessor Kishnik had to leave, but with regards to the employee of the month, just so I'm prepared, do we have somebody representing the office?
Yes.
Okay, I'll prepare then. Thank you for that. Okay, thank you for that. You may proceed.
This is in support of the Division of Sea Turtle Restoration under the direction of Dr. Donna Shaver. Whereas Nuaces County is the gateway to the Padre Island National Seashore, and generations of local residents and tourists have enjoyed the opportunity to recreate and participate in conservation efforts on Padre Island National Seashore. Whereas the Kemp's Ridley is the most endangered of all sea turtle species, and the Padre Island National Seashore is the most important nesting beach in the United States. Whereas the Division of Sea Turtle Restoration of the National Park Service is led by Dr. Donna Shaver, a dedicated public servant who has dedicated her life to saving the most endangered sea turtles, serving the public and this community. Further, she is admired and serves as a successful role model to young children, especially girls who wish to be like her. Whereas the Padre Island National Seashore hatchling releases remain high on the public's bucket list of things to see, providing a significant amount of ecotourism dollars as people travel to the park to see public releases as thousands of tourists and local residents frequently line up to see a single turtle release. Whereas the National Park Service is considering dismantling this legacy sea turtle conservation program with the intention of using the program's specific funds for other purposes within Padre Island National Seashore. And such an action is the result of a flawed and biased report which attempts to save money and seek consistency with sea turtle programs on the East Coast and Florida, while differences in the nesting and hatching habits of the Kemp's Ridley make this disastrous for the recovery efforts of the most critically endangered sea turtle in the world. Now therefore be it resolved that the Commissioners' Court of Nuaces County, Texas hereby supports the continuation of the Division of Sea Turtle Restoration in its current form under the direction of Dr. Donna Shaver, and further asks the United States Department of the Interior to support such continuation of this educational and economically successful conservation effort for the critically endangered Kemp's Ridley, sea turtle, and other endangered species.
So moved.
How about a second at this time?
Second.
All right, having a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? I would just ask Commissioner Chesney to go ahead and come back to discussion, and also to remind, we got a, a very good and comprehensive public comment on this issue last week. Commissioner Chesney?
Yes, Judge, thank you. I wanted to again thank Mrs. Klein for being here, or being there last week, and I'm sorry, I can't see if she's there in the courtroom today. She was very helpful in getting the wording for this resolution done, and I just wanted to say again, I don't think we can say enough how important Donna Shaver is to our computer, our community, how important the turtle release program is to our community, not just our community, to the country. This is very, very important stuff. I don't know if the Parks Director at the National Park here will see this, but I would, or see this video. I would ask Tyner, once the court passes this, assuming that happens, that you would provide and send a letter, cover letter on behalf of the entire court, and send that to the Parks Director there at the National Seashore to make sure he knows of our overwhelming support. I would also ask that it be sent to our, our congressman, both, both any congressman in the area, not just Congressman Cloud, Quayar, and anybody that we have relationships with. I would ask that, I know our state representatives are aware of this. I know Todd Hunter's weighed in on this, but to send it to our legislative delegation. I want this not just passed, please, but I would like this sent to everybody that matters. And obviously, in this particular case, our federal representatives are important. I'd like to send it to, to Senator Cruz and Senator Cornyn and make sure that they know this is a, this is a really, really big deal to me and a really, really big deal to, to my constituents, and I think to all of Nuaces County who have participated in this, the children that have gone out there for years and years and watched this amazing thing when these turtles are released back into the ocean and it is, or into the ocean. It is an incredible program. It is incredibly important. And, and what's going on out there allegedly that is seemingly to shut this down is beyond a travesty of justice. So I overwhelmingly support this. I appreciate Ms. Klein bringing, Mrs. Klein bringing this to our attention so that we could act on this, and she will note hopefully that we acted on this very, very quickly as we said we would. And I didn't want this to go on without, again, adding my strong support and words to this because this is just, it, it's, it's not, it's not saving the world or anything like that. It's not battling COVID or anything like that. But it is extremely important to this area and to our environment. And I think we need to do everything we can to help save this program and, and save Donna Shaver because she is truly an icon in this area and in this country and has done so, so much, way above and beyond what her job duties are in regards to this and other programs. So thank you for the opportunity to speak, Judge. I appreciate it.
Very good, and very good comments, of which all I echo. And as you recall, Mrs. Klein said that if we were to pass a resolution and also subsequently write a letter, she would make sure that it was also echoed to Secretary Holland, Deb Holland, Secretary of the Interior, and we think that's appropriate. But we will make certain, we do, as your good advice suggests, make certain that our entire federal and a local delegation receive a copy. And more importantly, I think I would also ask that, I know that we did send a note to Tim Richardson, and he's fully aware, but perhaps a quick call from you, Commissioner Chesney, to Tim, just to give him the complete background. This is why he is part of our team. He can help. He can actually deliver these resolutions and letters in person, and he has those relations. he has those relationships. And I just think that would be a really good use of time if you would, if you would take that on or agree to take that on at this time.
I don't have, I would be happy to. I don't have his number, but I would be happy to do that. And what would be even better is to put Tim, get Tim to talk to Teresa also, because she obviously is taking a lead on this and give her background. But I would be happy to do that. Yes, ma'am.
Absolutely. We're going to make all those good connections today. Well, we have a motion in a second. That was excellent discussion. Is there anybody else that wishes to comment at this time? Okay, in that case, all those in favor of the resolution supporting the turtle release program, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post him sign. Okay, thank you. The next part of our agenda is, can be found under G1, and that's the announcement of the August 21 Employee of the Month. And to do so appropriately, I do want to apologize to our tax assessor, who I told him he would be right at the front of the agenda, but he has, he had another important meeting to attend. I hope we can have him back next time. But I think the best way to talk about this outstanding Nuasis County employee is to read the following letter that Kevin provided to me. "I apologize for not writing you closer to the day of my visit to automobile registration office. You see, I was raised in a family dedicated to service to others and law enforcement and juvenile justice. I've seen, heard, and dealt with the good, bad, and the downright criminals since I was a child. My work history has been that of a police officer in Tulsa, Oklahoma, for eight years. Deputy County Sheriff, as well as working for two high-profile manufacturing and oil exploration companies in security in Oklahoma. I went back to school at the age of 34 to become an RN, and I've worked with veterans at the Department of Veteran Affairs. I retired early due to injuries sustained in the military, and I moved to Corpus, June of 20, Corpus Christi, in June of 2018. Nuasis County and the city of Corpus Christi has been such a pleasure to deal with these past three years. Now I wish I had grown up here. I recently renewed my vehicle registration, as well as a new handicap placard application at your office. And your office was so busy that day. But I could not have been received, I could not have received a warmer welcome to your office than how I was received by Ms. Hannah's warm smile and greeting. You have a gem of an employee in Ms. Hannah. She welcomed me with a warm and sincere smile and said, no worries, sir, I can take care of all of these today. Considering I was at least three to six months late in renewing my registration, I was very surprised with her reaction, her willingness to help me, and getting everything done on the very same day. I did have to offer to come back on a different day to do the disability parking application. And she replied, oh no, I've got you. We'll take care of this today. And she thanked me for my service in the military, and reminded me that since I was late registering, that I will need to register again in 2022 in order to have a full year on my next registration. I really appreciate it when someone understands that you are new in the state, new in the county, and that many state requirements are very different. I found the e- reservation queue program information in the lobby and downloaded it while I was there. There was a very long line waiting to use kiosks. Boy, was I glad I downloaded the queue program. I was very surprised to be paged to window five or six, and was seen before any of those that had not used the queuing system. It was so efficient in getting people organized quickly. My compliments, five stars out of five stars. Ms. Hannah, she is a keeper. Please give her the recognition she deserves, providing great service to your office and the citizens of Nuasis County. Thanks again, Walter Darian." We started this program, Nuasis County Employee of the Month, over a year ago. And it just always makes us feel so good, how one individual can change the way people feel about your county, about your government, and about the services we provide. We're so happy that tax assessor Kishnik recommended her. He says she loves her job at Motor Vehicle. And here's what's so amazing. She's only been here eight months. But perhaps, this is the thing that gives me chills. She's 19 years old. She's prior military. She did have to leave due to COVID. She's a student here studying to be a forensic biologist in Corpus Christi. She loves to cook. She loves music. She loves taking care of her grandmother. And most of all, she loves to make people smile. Hannah, you made me smile today. To be able to recognize you, it showcases that you don't have to be here for very long to make a great impact. It showcases you don't have to be very old, or even all that experienced, to also touch people. You make us so proud. And for that, you are being recognized this month in recognition for your outstanding service to Nuasis County as the Employee of the Month. Please welcome Hannah Cisnetos, along with, and forgive me, I don't have eyes on the room, a member of the tax assessor collector's office to help introduce and recognize Hannah.
Ralph is here, Judge.
Wonderful.
Hello, Judge and Commissioners' Court. Yes, Hannah's been with us for a short while. But while she's been with our office, she has just demonstrated a great willingness to learn, eager to learn, and her grasp of the knowledge has been outstanding. She's one of our best employees that we have in the office, and she's truly deserving of this recognition today. Thank you.
Thank you so much for being with us. Thank Kevin. And Hannah, you're sitting there so calmly, but you are just, you're a delight. I'm glad that you're having the opportunity to come to Commissioners' Court. I don't know if you've had a chance to come up, but let me say that when you thanked a military veteran for your service, you did something so special on behalf of our county. You might have done it just out of habit, or because you yourself understand what sacrifice is all about, having served yourself. But more importantly, you became an ambassador. And I just want to say, congratulations and thanks on behalf of all of us that wish and seek to honor veterans. You know, Nuasis County has its own Veterans Service Office. And the truth is, is that we need to be thanking you today for your service. So, welcome. Thanks for doing everything. And let us honor you the way we know how, with a wonderful round of applause.
End up, Hannah.
Commissioners, I hope that sets the tone for your, for your day. And Hannah, you are most welcome to take a picture with everybody. And if you have any comments, you certainly don't have to, but we're always happy to have you make comments as well. But I bet they want to have a picture with you.
Want to say anything, Hannah? Yeah, a couple of words, huh?
I would just like to say, Judge, thank you for this opportunity. I am in love with my job, and it makes me so happy to come to work every day, every day, and take care of the community and work with an amazing team. So, thank you all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Hannah. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Good job.
Want to take a picture, Tyner?
Okay, so that was an announcement, and so we can proceed.
Yeah.
Yes, proceed. And I'll take, see if, how we can make this work.
May that be able to work both of us up there. That's okay.
Okay, yeah.
Ready? Ready. One, two, three. One, two, three.
Thank you, Hannah.
Thank you, Tyner. Thank you so much. We'll proceed to general information reports when everybody's seated and we clean the podium. We're being extra careful in the courtroom, and we certainly appreciate everybody keeping their distance and, and the sanitization process that's going on. But we'll turn to H1, which would be Melissa Mungia. And I just want to make sure before I turn to her that she's in the courtroom or on the phone. If not, we can skip and come back.
I'm here, Judge.
There she is. Okay. So Melissa, settle in, and we can go right to you whenever you're ready.
Perfect, and thank you. I'm attending virtually as, after this briefing, I'm going to be going out to the fairgrounds. Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, great. Just wanted to say, you know, there's no other way to start this briefing this morning, other than by saying that our county is currently in a dire situation. I know that, that that word isn't used, or maybe it's overused, but we really, really, truly are. The surge that we're experiencing with COVID-19, we're assuming the, the reason why we're having such a powerful surge is the Delta variant being here. So it's safe to assume that there's a lot of cases of Delta here. It's extremely important right now for the public to be aware of the situation, to be aware not only of the numbers and where we're at on the numbers, but what is happening, what's happening in the hospitals, what's happening with the schools, what's happening with your parent senior center, what is happening right now, what's going on. Public information is probably the most critical component of mitigating the surge. So I stand here today to talk very openly about our situation, which I always do, but want to start with how urgent it is. Our cases yesterday, we had 425 COVID positive cases yesterday and nine deaths. Our current situation, our current efforts, we have requested from the state, a team, I know that I mentioned this last time, but we weren't sure where we were at on that, whether it was going to be granted or not, a team to come down and run a rapid infusion center at the Richard M. Borchards Fairgrounds. That STAR request was approved. The BCFS team began moving in yesterday, loading in all kinds of equipment, beds and other equipment needed to run an infusion center like that. But in the meantime, a very passionate and nervous group of leaders came together to say, we have to do something until then. And at that time, we also didn't know if the STAR was going to be granted. So it was in an effort to close the gap from where we were at that day, to, to having potentially a full-blown infusion center provided for us. So we opened up what we're calling the BRIDGE RIC. Again, R-I-C is Rapid Infusion Center. This is a temporary infusion center that was set up at the Memorial Hospital. That site was chosen due to how well-vetted it was, how well we are in use of it with testing and vaccinations. And so it was critical for us to, to use a site that we could open very quickly. We had medical tents provided. We had a group of folks, again, agencies coming together to make this happen. So we've got Nuasis County, Krista Spahn, Amistad, Public Health, HCA, CBRAC, the Coastal Bend Regional Advisory Council, Coastal Bend Council of Governments, Robstown, all came together to say, how can we stand up an infusion center to close that gap? And so that's currently running at the Memorial Hospital. It's set to run through Friday, and then beyond that, we'll make an assessment of the volume when the, when the official infusion center stands up. But in the time that that's been operating, the soft run was on Monday afternoon, and we went live on Tuesday. So from Tuesday morning, the hours are from 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. So from, from our soft opening to yesterday evening at closure, we had given 31 infusions. That's, that's a large number. It doesn't seem that large, but it really is a large number of infusions. And we're anticipating a much larger of infusions happening out at the fairgrounds. This is our first line of defense. Well, our first line of defense, folks, is wearing masks and choosing to social distance, and choosing to stay away from, from groups and other people. That's the first line of defense. Vaccination, that's part of the first line of defense. But a second line of defense for us is being able to give these antibody treatments in the early stages of COVID, so that we prevent those folks needing to go into the hospital. Hospital capacities are full. There's not enough, there's beds, there's not enough staff. The staffing issue is critical here in Nuasis County and across the nation, really. The state of Texas is suffering with the shortage of clinical staff, and physicians, and nurses, and respiratory therapists, as well as the supplies that are needed for managing infusions and for managing COVID patients in ICUs. The need for alternative care sites is at the forefront right now. And then we have to look beyond that. It's our job in emergency management, in government, to look ahead of where we're at as well. And so I don't want to have to bring this information for you, but we have to think about where we're at. And so requests have gone out to bring, and we did this at the beginning of the pandemic, bringing in a morgue trailer to put out at the fairgrounds. We're not, we're not designed to handle a large capacity of deaths per day. And here we find ourselves. So all we can do is stop the spread of the virus, treat people early, get people vaccinated. We have to prevent this last part from happening. Too many deaths. That's where we're at. And the whole world needs to be worried about it right now. This is the time where public messaging and sharing this information is so incredibly critical. We're still running vaccination operations. Testing has gotten even more large of operations than it was before. Public health is testing also at the memorial site. Yesterday, when I went out to site to check on the infusion center, the line for testing was around the block, all around the hospital. And so people are worried, people are getting tested, and I'm glad people are getting tested, because you don't know what to do until you know if you have COVID or not. So please get tested, please wear a mask, please social distance. The biggest component or complexity of where we're at in the response right now to COVID-19 is the funding side, is the reimbursement side, is the how do we continue to do this? I, I say from emergency management, from Melissa, that we're at all hands on deck, all funds on deck point right now in the response. We've been working out how this is going to happen. It's changing every day, like it was in the beginning of the pandemic. The rules, the limitations on funding and how it's spent, what it's spent on, with every day that passes by, there's changes that come down from the governor's office, guidance changes on schools. And so everybody needs to be highly aware and alert right now. But it's going to change or redirect what we're doing here in Nuasis County to combat COVID-19. But we're ready. I need the public to be ready. I want, as the emergency management coordinator for the county, I want people to wear masks. I want people to social distance. And I urge all of the, the leadership who can make decisions in this area to consider doing what we did in the beginning, where we said, everybody stay home for two weeks. Let's stop this rise, right? That's where we're at again. And that's something that I think is very important. As far as future support for the state, that's a, a big question and changing right now that we're experiencing. We have an urgent need for staff. Krista Spahn, HCA, Amistad, everybody is short on clinical staff. And so at this point, we were told originally that those types of requests can be submitted to the state. That potentially could be changing over the next few days, and we might be able to send in a request. We're already talking about how we want to handle those requests as a county, as a region, using the Coastal Bend Regional Advisory Council, as they stand in their current role, to communicate and to liaison with the hospitals, to communicate the hospital needs with us, and develop a full comprehensive plan or request plan. In, in doing this request together, you know, when everybody shouts at the same time, it's a lot louder. And so this is going to show how dire and urgent the need in our region is, and furthermore, the need and the urgency of our situation here in Nuasis County. That's what I have at this time. I want to open the floor to questions. I apologize for how quickly I'm giving this brief, but again, there's several operations that are getting up and standing and are very critical for our county.
Thank you, Melissa. We will move on to the other disasters briefly, since we did have folks that stayed in the room to discuss flooding and drainage. But at this time, I would ask if there are any questions for Melissa. It's a, it's a good summary, but there's a lot of discussion with regards to eligibility for the infusion center. Let me just run over three important aspects. Number one, in order to use the infusion center, you must have a referral from a doctor. If you do not have a doctor, you need to go through the COVID clinic to determine eligibility, and they will get you referred. The third item is that, again, I want to reiterate, the state is paying for the infusion center that will be held in Exhibit Hall A. It will be operational starting Friday morning at 0700. The current bridge is open now. That does not mean that infusions are not happening at our three hospitals. They are. There's also, Dr. Hector P. Wellness has been. Um, there's also, Dr. Hector P. Wellness has been, I believe, they have five beds, and they are full. So the therapeutic is monoclonal antibody. It's called Regeneron. It is free. We um are grateful to the Oasis County Medical Society, uh, and that includes Dr. Walker and Ms. Stith for really taking a leadership role and then all the partners. We would not have been able to even do a soft opening uh when seven people absolutely needed the infusions had it not been for Krista Spahn. They they gave us the Regeneron, the needles, the supplies. We're using International Medical Corps air-conditioned tents that we got last year. Uh, because of our efforts, uh, those tents are finally really being used in a way that they were meant for emergencies. And so uh are there any questions at this time we can answer regarding the RIC? Um, or the temporary RIC or anything with regards to COVID? I I'd also ask that you tune in this afternoon for the press conferences. Texas A&M Corpus Christi will be um uh unfortunately, I've already seen the slides, and it's a grim picture of what will happen in our county in the next thirty days if we do not do everything in our power to reverse the trend. They're going to show you the worst that can happen, and they're going to also uh let you know that it doesn't have to happen like this. We can change the course of our destiny, but it's going to take action. Thank you, and again, that public messaging is critical, and we are making emergency decisions right now that you will see later. Um, and I just would ask that you understand that this is a dire situation in hospitals throughout the state of Texas, but particularly in South Texas where we are sporting a fifty percent higher, higher average in the state of Texas. So later, uh, when you say, who told you and uh why did you do that? I'm letting you know right now, we are imploding. It's absolutely critical that we act in an emergency. Uh, and even though we sit here very calmly in Commissioner's Court, I promise you, uh, we have been working twenty-four seven for the past two weeks to not get to the point um uh that, you know, so many other counties find themselves in. We at least have a blueprint for action and we're ready to um to showcase it to you. If you feel like you need in more information about what's going on, what we're doing, what we're spending on, you want a workshop, you just let me know. Um, and we will give it to you. But we are in the full throes of emergency, acting under the Declaration uh and doing everything to save life. And I'd like for you guys to know and hear that from me. Um, Commissioners, I yield to you.
Melissa, I do have a question. This Commissioner has none of this. You hear me?
Go ahead, sir.
Melissa, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you, sir.
Melissa, uh, thank you for the information. I think it was very good. But under Government Code four eighteen requires emerg- emergency management to have a disaster plan. Do we have one?
Yes, we do have an emergency management plan. We have the full emergency management plan, and then we have our individual annexes that address each um disaster type of component of emergency management. Um, I have, I've stated this before earlier in the pandemic. Um, those plans that we do have, they set a backbone for our response for different areas. Um, any kind of mass medical operations, public health crisis, um, mass sheltering or other things like that. But this pandemic has been something unprecedented. And then the several disasters we've experienced on top. But really, this pandemic has redefined um how we operate. Um, it's it's changed boundaries, it's changed the way, it's it's interrupted supply chains we didn't think would be interrupted. It's it's really redefined all of our our methods. And so beyond the the pandemic, all of our plans will be updated to reflect what was learned in COVID-19. Um, those plans are in place. Our volunteer reception corps that we ran for the um mass vaccination site out at the fairgrounds, that volunteer management system, that was all well-defined in our in our volunteer management plan. But there was much that had to be adopted and adapted because of the threat that we had, the virus, the fact that it was something that could be spread, the fact that we didn't know certain things about it. There were a lot of limitations that we had and a lot that our plans didn't give us that we've had to figure out um since this pandemic has started. Again, all that will be applied into our new plans. But as our plan stood, nothing really would have clearly defined how all of these different types of operations um would have occurred.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your briefing, and I agree with you. Uh, we totally don't don't know everything about this virus. We're still learning, but uh we appreciate all you do. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Is there any other uh question for Melissa or comment at this time?
Judge, I just want to comment on this. Uh, the infusion centers, I just, um, once again, to see our county kind of at the cutting edge of of response and dealing with uh COVID ever since the beginning. And and and, you know, this is just one of many items that we've taken the lead. So uh I am thankful that we have those resources that have come together, that you, Melissa, and others behind the scenes have worked to get this to happen. And I hope more of our partners uh join in and and uh participate. I know that were some key groups that were not mentioned uh when Melissa listed all the groups. And so hopefully people uh see the value in this and how important it is and it could, that could help uh reduce and and minimize the 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 actual impact of COVID uh on individuals. So um I'm I'm waiting and and we'll be looking to see what what the responses are and and how uh the healing rates or recovery rates uh go with this. So thank you all for your work.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioners?
Judge, I just wanted to add real quick. I think the um, you all said a lot of what I would have said, and 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 I echo a lot of the the statements made, I think, without a doubt. And I'll be honest, that's that's the reason I'm zooming this week. Um, I'm a little, you know, uptight about all of what's going on. This Delta variant is extremely serious. I've been, I've I have um put back into effect in my business uh the the man- the mandatory wearing of of masks when they're away from their workstations to to protect people. Uh, I know I I can't do that everywhere, and 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 I'm not sure that's within the rights of of any of us to do. But at the same time, in my private business, that's what I've opted to do for the safety and welfare of my um my employees. I think it's important um to note that um, you know, we we need to be encouraging people to stay distant and wear masks and and do the things that need to do to keep safe. Um, it's a, it's a very difficult time. This Delta variant is is really, really scary, especially with the effect that it's having on children, unlike the last one. Um, that's very scary, young people, healthy people. Uh, I know we've lost um, you know, young people during this time. Some of the people that we've lost have been young, healthy. Uh, I know there's a, I think a young mother that we lost here locally. Judge, if I'm not mistaken, and I don't want to misquote or mistake, so I think I'd heard that, so I don't want to say something that's wrong. But uh you're nodding your head, so I think that's what we're saying. And this is just, this has been a a difficult, difficult time. And it's a shame because we worked so hard to get the vaccine, and we thought the vaccine was going to really help. A lot of people have chosen not to get vaccinated. That's difficult. The difficulty of this too is been watching these statistics where ninety-five, and again, I don't want to misquote, eight, the the vast majority, uh vast, vast majority of our hospitalizations are unvaccinated people. And what I can, what I can read, and again, it's my opinion, not a factual statement, is what I can read is that the vaccine, if you have a vaccine and you get it, it really has helped mitigate the s- the symptoms quite a bit. And that's, the vaccine is still helping more than anything else. Um, but yet, you know, I I I've got people that work for me that I know that have been vaccinated and still have gotten COVID. Fortunately, their symptoms haven't been lighter, and they're not ones that are in the hospital, thank God, at this point. Um, but it's a difficult time, and I hope that people will consider or consider, um, you know, not making this political and just letting people be who they are. And 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 if someone wants to wear a mask, let them and don't harangue them. Don't say anything bad about them and 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 vice versa. But but it it it's just tough. And and everybody I know in leadership positions are trying to make this, and at least locally, I don't know federally and state, I don't know those people, um, are trying to do this, not in a political fashion, but just in what's right. Uh, and sometimes those decisions will be questioned, and sometimes people won't think they're right. But it's a difficult time and and uh, you know, I continue to to pray for those that are in the position they're in of having to make these day-to-day decisions. And I appreciate what y'all are are doing and having to go through.
Thank you, Commissioner. Is there anybody else? Again, I'm just going to reiterate.
I encourage everybody to wear a mask, Judge. Let me see if I can tell this. All I can say, we encourage everybody to try to wear a mask whenever you can and, you know.
I'm sorry, it's very difficult to hear you, Commissioner.
I wasn't wearing a mask. You know, but I encourage everybody to try to wear a mask whenever you can. You know, and it's just your call, but, you know, be courteous of people around you also. And, you know, so, uh, I just, you know, our prayers are those families that have been touched by this virus and will continue to pray for them.
Thank you. I also, again, I was just saying, I want to reiterate, all you have to do is call Melissa um or my office, um, and we will get you any information that you need on COVID, um, whether it's statistics, if it helps you answer a constituent's question, um, anything regarding our centers. We are coordinating with so many entities. We are using our legislative delegation to get all the messages back to our legislative delegation uh so that they know, A, we're grateful for the state of Texas and the position they took to fund the Rapid Infusion Center, for the decision they made yesterday to fund the hospitals and staffing, and for um the decisions, you know, that they're making, uh, they're about to make with regards to funding. We want to be very active in that, in that voice. And uh later this afternoon, we'll be talking about legal questions as it applies to uh funding and using our our funds um and from ARPA. So we'll have that discussion later. But really important for you to know that do not mistake us acting quickly and expeditiously for not, um, you know, checking with you or getting you the information that you need. Anything that you want to know or need to know, we can get it for you very quickly. But we are working literally round the clock. Um, you know, this morning, it was about getting, you know, a better, bigger, batter generator so that those tents can stay cooler because we were unhappy with the temperature in those tents yesterday. It is a logistics um operation that, quite frankly, should take all of our times if it was just that one thing. But as Melissa always points out, it's never one thing. It's about twenty things. And uh the new thing is that we know that our COVID clinic needs new, it needs more staff support. Our health department needs new staff support. And we are working furiously to get positions filled at city-county public health that are not currently filled. And um, and again, so there's lots of moving parts. If you know people that have a health background, that are maybe in retirement, that want to be a part of the solution, uh, and just say, hey, I'm going to come out of retirement and and help. Uh, Melissa's got a volunteer organization that she mentioned that she can get you the number to, and we're being the facilitators. But they are really doing all of the um, the survey, if you will, and in taking uh the information that gets those amazing people to the right location. Um, Melissa, we can just quickly um moved away from COVID, but again, always stand ready uh to help answer questions. But with regards to the flooding and drainage, you may or may not have been on earlier, but we had some residents here. They provided some amazing photos. I've already had them sent to your office and also sent to Susan Roth. But the questions really came about the delineation of whose responsibility is, um, you know, certain maintenance of drainage ditches. And I was going to suggest that um, I wanted the folks to see you and understand that our office considers drainage and flooding paramount and that we are uh working comprehensively to figure out how we can Band-Aid before we can get to those big projects. But the Band-Aid comes from us advocating for the clean, you know, for the cleaning, if you will, of those ditches. So we'll identify the the pictures to the maps by GIS, figure out, A, whose whose responsibility, B, can we help in that responsibility? And C, try to do uh follow-up with these constituents that are in our audience today. And I didn't know if you wanted to just make a blanket statement about that so that they know who you are and that they can use your office uh as a resource.
Yes, absolutely. And sorry for for missing that this morning. Um, but thank you, Judge, for for giving me a quick synopsis. So I'll be here. Um, folks, you have my phone number. We gave it out last time. It's three six one five three three two three five five is my cellphone. And then my email address is melissa.mundia@noasisco.com. You can reach me either way. I will work. Um, we've been compiling a lot of photograph and damages and other that a lot of you in different communities have sent in. That's giving us a really great picture. Um, but for that specific debris, um, if you'll send those pictures and anything that you have to me, I'll work with our Public Works Department um and make sure with GIS, like the judge said, we can lay out a map and we'll make a a plan, um, how we can go through. Again, we have to assess depending on what area, whose area of responsibility it is. Um, but we'll get those players to sit down together in a meeting and talk about creating one, two, or three steps uh that we can follow to get through um this process. If we can clean up debris, obviously, it's going to help us um have less flooding the next time we have an event. So those those drainage ways being clean and clear is a priority. Um, so I'm here to be that 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 coordinator between the community, between Public Works, and between some of those different um organizations that might be involved. If it's a, if it's a state road, if it's, it doesn't matter. Um, I'll make sure that the right players are communicating so that we can address those issues, those temporary um fixes until we really get that comprehensive plan together on improving the drainage and the flood control here in Oasis County.
Melissa, they don't have to send it. I've I've got them already, so I'm going to send them, put them on a thumb drive and get them to you. Uh, but I do want you to know that I also received a quick, a message that Juan, the mittel, our county engineer, will be presenting a um, a drainage um report on August the sixteenth. So that that is just, he's going to confirm that right now for us that you're going to be presenting. Go ahead.
That that's correct, Judge. Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. Um, we'll, we'll be doing a a complete uh uh presentation on on Monday, on the sixteenth regarding uh drainage issues from the last two previous uh rain events. We have talked to uh these two constituents. I don't want to pronounce your last name because I'm going to shop it up. For again, yes, we met with them yesterday morning. Uh, they brought their concerns to our office, and I and I appreciate that. And uh we received, and I know you, as y'all Commissioners and Judge, uh, y'all have received numerous, um, I'm going to say complaints about the drainage within these subdivisions. But I just kind of wanted to be real brief, Judge, on on what I'm going to talk about on Monday. Um, right now, we are doing um some ditch grading in two of the subdivisions in the northwest area of of our county. Uh, one's Broadway, uh, Broad Acres, and the other one's Valley View. Uh, we are doing some ditch maintenance in those areas. Um, in regards to the mowers, I know you had some, and I do appreciate you going out there and doing some mowing. I know it's not your responsibility, but I know that right now, we we have, uh, as Jerry had discussed previously in our budget meeting, you know, we only have eight mowers going on right now. So if we do mow uh even maybe twice a year, that's a lot uh within our right-ofways. So um, you know, I know it comes down to to uh to manpower and and equipment. Uh, so uh based on the manpower and equipment right now, uh, two mows per year is pretty much what we're going to be doing uh through our Oasis County. Um, but I sure thank you, sir, for mowing our right-ofway.
Juan, can you move the mic right by you, please?
Okay. Can you hear me now?
And Connie, would you take that mic way high up on the on the sound? We can't hear anything online.
And in regards to the uh, to the illegal dumping, um, you know, we are, we do have two quote uh environmental enforcement officers. And I know it's it's kind of, they're limited, right? Because it's two code enforcement officers for the whole throughout Oasis County. And we did talk to.
Hey, Juan, just give me a moment. We, let's see if we can correct this because there's nobody, we cannot hear. I'm pretty good at reading lips, but not, not through the tube. Just, somebody help there, get a better mic or.
We can, we can hear.
How about now?
Switch with Tiner, if you can. Try it now, Juan.
Okay. Can you hear me now, Judge?
Of course. Wonderful. Thank you.
Sorry about that. Um, so Judge, I was just kind of going, just. Sorry about that. Um, so Judge, I was just kind of going, just real brief, Judge. Um, we have, right, right now, we are cleaning ditches within two, uh, subdivisions in the northwest area of our county, which is Broad Acres and Valley View. We are doing some ditch cleaning in that area and also doing some COVID cleaning. Um, I know that, um, we were, we, right now, we only have two grade aws. And I'm just going to be real brief, because I know we're, I'm going to do a presentation-
Yeah, and just remember, this is under disasters. So you're doing all of this in relationship to the flooding that occurred, and I'm helping you here. So just say, that's, that's accurate, right?
That's correct, Judge.
Okay, thank you.
So right now, we have two grade aws, and I know Commissioner Hernandez ran it out to additional grade aws, uh, a few weeks ago for us to, um, kind of capture and, and kind of keep up with our, with our ditch cleaning, our ditch maining, maintaining, and, um, and we do appreciate that. But also, at that time, you know, our manpower is limited because we only have so much manpower in order for us to perform some of this work. So Commissioner, thank you. Um, on the, um, on the mowers, Judge, I was mentioning that on the mowers, we have eight mowers right now. And on the eight mowers, we're lucky, we do maintenance throughout the whole county for two mowings, uh, throughout the whole year. Um, so I, I know Jerry had mentioned in a previous budget meeting that we had over 20 something mowers, Jerry, I want to-
Twenty-four mowers.
Twenty-four mowers at some time. So, um, we kind of, uh, downscaled on that. Uh, in regards to court, law, uh, environmental enforcement, uh, we have two environmental enforcement. And, uh, I know they're kind of spread out thinly throughout the whole county. So I'll make sure that they go out there on County Road 50. And, and I already had talked to our code enforcement officers since yesterday and told them that for them to start driving out there and, and doing some of the rounds out there on County Road 50. And 69, yes, sir, yes, sir, within our, within our limits. Uh, so, but I will be doing a presentation or a very thorough, uh, presentation on, on Monday in regards to drainage, in regards to, uh, environmental enforcement, and also, uh, to kind of update, uh, Commissioners on, um, on Public Works and what we've done here in the past year of, uh, of Public Works.
Okay, and we appreciate that, and again, all of that has to do with the disasters. The, all that work that you're going to talk about is, is really germane because of these extreme weather events and particularly the May and the July. But it's not just limited to that. These floods in 2015 and 2016, you know, should have really put us on notice. But it's the May and July flooding that's really showcased what these problems are.
Normally, normally in a year, you don't have over a hundred year, uh, intensity. Uh, back in, what is it, March, and then here last month, uh, there were over a hundred year design. I mean, you're, you're talking about over 12 inches an hour, I mean, within a day, that's a lot of rain. Uh, so it, it's, it's not, it's not normal. You get that once every-
That's right.
You get that once every-
Okay, I appreciate that.
Yeah, you get that once every hundred years.
Okay, thank you, and-
I have a comment also.
Excuse me just one second.
Oh, I'm sorry, go over there.
It's hard for me, I've got to let the camera switch. Let me call for question, uh, any, uh, comments or questions, just give it a second. And then if you'll say, I have a, we actually have buttons now, and we're going to start using them since we do a lot of virtual technology. Hopefully you can let us know online that, or let us know with the button that you want to, you want to speak when we're on virtual. Go ahead, Commissioner.
Yes, I just want to let the folks and Juan know that I, I did get an email yesterday in my office about the concerns of the, uh, ditch in County Road 69. And I did get in contact with, uh, people in Robstown. I did not speak with the mayor, but I spoke to his, uh, assistant. And they took down the information and they said they were going to go out there and take a look at it, see if they can get it done as soon as they could. But, uh, I did, uh, take that route and made contact with, uh, Robstown, City of Robstown for that. And Juan, getting back to your, what your needs are, uh, I do think that we need to improve your, your budget and get you the people qualified that you need to run those mowers and those grade aws that we're planning on getting for you. And you do need more manpower.
Thanks, Commissioner.
Thank you very much for what you do, you and Jerry both, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, sir.
All right, okay, thank you. Are there any other comments regarding the flooding or drainage? As we continue to talk about, uh, the effects of the, the floods, which we still are striving, uh, to Texas. Uh, if we can combine them, they may qualify for FEMA, uh, public assistance. And, um, so we're looking for a declaration at the higher level with regards to those. The one thing that we should, I just want to end with, if there's no other comments here, is that I should have remarked that we are, this is really for, for Dale, but I'm going to hopefully have a longer conversation. But, uh, we are going to open up new FEMA project worksheets, uh, to assist us because the original ones, um, really focused on vaccines. So we're going to do two things. One is we're going to get a scope modification, so it's not just the fairgrounds that we're working in. Now that we've got clinics all over, mobile opportunities, um, rapid infusion centers, we need to do a scope modification, and we are working on that so that we will get, uh, those, that funding, um, expanded. And then the second thing is a completely different FEMA project worksheet relating to potential other needs that might be, you know, that might pop up due to hospitals, um, not having appropriate, uh, capacity to handle folks. If I shudder to think what would happen if we had, you know, 1,500 people in the hospital, like the projections are going to say. I mean, where would we put them? What other, what other venues or centers would we have to create? We need to make sure we have advanced funding like we did for vaccines. That means money sitting in our treasury, not that we're having to spend it. It doesn't mean you don't have to get the paperwork and the justification, but it does mean that you are prepared and your county has funds that it can spend. We did that for vaccines, it was smart, we've got those monies that we're, uh, basically drawing down on. And we need to do the same for this, these new, um, projects. And so I just wanted you guys to hear that, that's super important because, trust me, we worry about every dollar, but we worry about life first and foremost. And so we're trying to do both at the same time, be fiscally smart, uh, and, uh, also react quick enough so where life is protected. And again, we can share more information about those FEMA modifications, uh, and new project worksheets whenever you need. Okay, um, we can now move on if there's no other comments regarding, um, the just different disasters, uh, both flooding have caused in COVID-19. Also, I'll move to the consent agenda, hearing none, and ask that you review items A through I. And are there any that need special consideration or have questions? I'd like to hear a motion to approve the consent agenda if there are none, no, none to remove, none, no item to remove.
So moved.
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner, I'll second. Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Okay, pose same sign. All right, we'll move into regular agenda, and the very first one, um, is an interlocal agreement between the City of Corpus Christi, San Patricio County, Port of Corpus Christi, Port Industries regarding coastal bin bays and estuaries program. And all very patient on the line this morning has been Dr. Kirsten Stanzel from Coastal Bin Bays and Estuaries. She's the lead for development, as well as Executive Director Ray Allen. And, um, um, I just always ask this, um, Ray, before we get started, you can help introduce, uh, or if you're here for a resource. But, uh, our county attorney, uh, is everything in order for this agreement to be, um, uh, to proceed with this agreement at this time?
Yes, it's been reviewed by our office and it's been approved by the port.
Okay, great. Ray, do you want to set the tone for us? Just need to unmute, Ray.
It says he's unmuted, but we still don't hear him.
Okay, do you want to check volume, Ray? We see that you're unmuted, but no, no audio. Okay, well-
I, I can find Judge if-
Go ahead, Dr. Stanzel, yeah, go ahead, Dr. Stanzel, this is why backup is good, this is excellent.
Well, and I say, I was not prepared to speak, so I would be probably as eloquent as Ray was. But, um, you know, we, the, the CBB, uh, the Coastal Bin Bays and Estuaries Program is looking to, um, update our interlocal agreement, which has, um, well, it, it's been in place for about 20 years now, and we're, we're updating this, uh, after a recent update of our bylaws. It's already been approved, I believe, by the Port, uh, Port of Corpus Christi Commission. And now we're looking for the other, um, local parties that are part of the agreement to, um, to sign and, and set our course again for the next, um, next several years here. And, and obviously, I, I know, I think most of the Commissioners know already, but the, um, the, the county does have a, a seat on our board of directors, and the judge, um, uh, fills that, fills that role, um, and, or her proxy, um, if she's unable to attend. And so, um, and, and the county has been on the board for, um, since the program's inception and has been an integral part of, um, you know, moving our organization forward over the years. And we just appreciate the continued support and, um, you know, I, I don't know what else to say about that.
I think that's good. Yeah, I think that's good. I'm going to check with Ray one more time. Ray, do you have your audio? Don't worry, Ray. Uh, let me, let me move to Commissioner Chesney to give you a little more time. Commissioner Chesney.
Thank you, Judge. Um, I, I'm, I'm very much in support of this. I think the Coastal Bin Bays and Estuaries is a phenomenal, phenomenal operation, uh, here in Oasis County. And, and I know they serve more than Oasis County, but that's our focus today. Um, I would also offer, Judge, and I know you serve and do, you know, take that very seriously. If, if there is a time that you are not available, I would love to, um, be the alternate, um, to, to sit there um, in case you need some backup. And again, I know you're there most of the time and don't need to, but situations arise, if you can, I'd be happy to, to fill in for you and take your proxy, uh, as, as you would like, because that's obviously a very important, uh, organization, and especially, and to all over Oasis County, but especially in my precinct, since I've got most of the coast. Uh, so I appreciate very much what they do and would, would be happy to, to serve as an alternate if the judge can't make it.
I, I, thank you. Yeah, I'll accept that, that's great. Uh, Linda has been attending, uh, when I cannot be there, but as you said, normally I'm there. I'm, I'm really proud to say that I'm now the vice chair of the, uh, entity. Uh, Dr. Brian Gully, our appointee from the county, is the chair. So it's really, um, our leadership is very strong. Uh, but the one area that you could help me, and watch Dr. Stanzel smile. I have, because of COVID, really been not as active as I need to be, but I could use a partner, and I think I just found one. Uh, I am chairing with Dr. Stanzel the Development, uh, Committee. And Dr. Stanzel, if I, if we can have people that are not on the board, if the bylaws allow for that, then you could come even help me co-chair that with Dr. Stanzel. What we need to do is widen our net, and it would get you basically all the information. It would be like being on the board, just not voting, but-
Be happy to.
Right, and we'll make that happen, Dr. Stanzel, and we owe you that meeting. I have been thinking of idea, now I can have someone to bounce those ideas off of. Basically, Brent, we've never had this, we really need to do bigger development. What's happening on the coast with the dollar amounts that are, that are available with Restore and, um, NERDA and GLO just require that we have the adequate staff to handle the admin of these grants. Um, EPA, um, uh, gives us those dollars to, to, to work with, TCEQ matches, but we have not had a raise in 20 years, and we really need the coast to lead on this, like we lead on TUIA. Uh, Doc, Senator Taylor, uh, from Galveston has the other NEP. But again, if we had a, a bigger development committee, development just isn't money. It's development of our, what we're already doing, and getting the appropriate state funding is key. And Chairman Hunter, uh, has always been supportive, but we have not been able to bring it home, two sessions in a row. And that's because we've got to make it a high priority, and we could use some help. Dr. Stanzel, does that adequately represent?
Does, we would welcome the support, and I will, I will be reaching out to you, for sure.
Juan, Judge, let me ask you one, as a, in the, in the mode of development, I would think with all the coastal restoration that, that, um, the Estuaries Group does, that some of our GOMESA funds, if they're not already being appropriated there, would be one of those areas that we could look at for specific projects and things of that nature. Because I think that's exactly what the GOMESA funds are for. And I know we have projects lined, in, in mind for some of those funds, but, but, but that certainly could be one of the, the areas we look at, um, you know, in that vein. Because I, I, without a doubt, Coastal Bin Bays and Estuaries does a lot of coastal restoration. Uh, so maybe some of that could be looked at too. So you, sometimes you, if you, if you, if you ask for a partner, you get it, and, and I'll figure out a way to spend, you know, that GOMESA money and, and good, good projects for Coastal Bin Bays and Estuaries any day.
We're just very lucky, we have a great partnership, um, with Coastal Bin Bays and Estuaries and also the Bays Council. Uh, Dr. Stanzel has really educated myself and the other members of the Baffin Bay stakeholders. And because of that, you know, we now have a national platform. You know, I would say, I would not be the co-chair of the caucus, um, on a national level for the Gulf Coast if it had not been for our experience. So you're right, I have a great, we have a great partnership in this interlocal agreement. All it does is update us and get modern. And I think if Ray, uh, were able to visit, he would just say, this is overdue, and we kind of needed to get this, all this updating, and that's really all this is. If there are, oh wait, I think he's unmuted, Ray? No, but you kind of look like, like one of David's favorite birds, where you just sort of see them from a distance, you know? And we admire it.
His present, his presence is so big and so, you know, out of the world. We don't, we, we know it, what Ray is, so he, he's good.
Hey, listen, Ray, it's, it's great, you get what you need, you don't have to say a word. Um, let me just call for the, let me ask for the motion, Commissioner Chesney.
I would, I'd make the motion to pass.
Okay, we've got a motion to, uh, approve this interlocal agreement between the entities as listed below, um, including Oasis County regarding the Coastal Bin Bays and Estuaries Program, and I'll second that motion. Is there any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, you even got a volunteer out of it, Kristen?
Yes, thank you. I did, if you'll allow me, like, just two seconds to make the announcement. I just wanted to, um, say that I, I saw those photos earlier, um, about some of the, you know, I, I don't know if a lot of that, um, debris was a result of the flooding, or I know it sounded like there was maybe some illegal dumping as well. Um, I was just going to say, we, we don't know if we have the grant yet, but we recently applied for a grant. The county actually provided a letter of support, and it's to try to address some of the illegal dumping issues that are going on in the rural areas of our, of the coastal bin counties. Um, and so hopefully crossing our fingers that, that that will, that grant will come through, will have some opportunities for people to, um, dispose of things, um, free of charge, and hopefully remove some of the barriers, um, you know, of cost and accessibility, which leads to a lot of the illegal dumping. And then, of course, also do some education about it as well. So, um, we're hopeful that that will, that will come through and expand some of the litter prevention stuff that we're already working on with the county, so.
That's, that's wonderful. We will ask, uh, you to keep us informed. You know, when you get that, and we will make certain that, uh, the county engineer who works with enforcement control, and of course, the Drainage District, there's so many good partners there, but yes, keep us posted, Doctor, thank you.
Thank y'all so much.
Okay, thank you so much. We're going to, um, uh, before we get to the tax rate, let's go ahead and take up, uh, I'm going to come out of order and ask Juan to present items for, uh, B, I'm sorry, 3B, 1 and 2. 3B, 1 and 2.
One's not in the courtroom, Judge.
And one is the, uh, B1 is the donation agreement with Cypress Point Capital to construct a portion of CR43. And, um, that is in precinct number four. Okay, so we, we went into get Juan, okay. Uh, Commissioner Chesney, do you want to introduce, or just, would you like to wait for Juan?
I'm sorry, Judge, can you repeat? I didn't hear that.
It's Cypress Point Capital, are you, are you, um, briefed on that? It's B1 on Public Works. It says, consider execution of a donation agreement with Cypress-
Oh, oh, yes, I'm sorry, I just, I just didn't recognize the name of the entity.
Want to give us a little background while we're waiting?
Yeah, I want to make sure, because for some reason I did not get the background, but I, and, and I, and I'm not, uh, as familiar, sorry, with the-
No worries, we can wait.
No, I know the, I know that the, what we're doing, I just wasn't familiar with the Cypress Point Capital LLC name- familiar with the Cypress Point Capital LLC name, because they were getting a legal entity. What I believe we're doing here, Judge, and hopefully Juan will get there so he can verify, and I don't waste the court's time, but basically, this is a, a, a joint agreement where I've gotten the developer of this particular area to split the cost of rehabbing a county road with the county. It's, it's been something I've been kind of advocating and trying to do, and get these developments going, so that we can raise some, some money, you know, new, new tax revenue for the county, 'cause this is in the, in the county, not in the city limits at this point. If this is the one that I'm talking about, the developer will be, therefore, you have, we have to do it according to legal as a donation agreement, and Jenny's there, she can correct me if I'm totally off base on this. But we'll have to, we have to do it as a donation agreement. I think Kent Brown drafted this, which I appreciate the, the work of the county attorney on this, and we're just, we're just accepting, we're just accepting that money from the developer for his portion of the county road that we are rehabbing. So I see Juan is in the room, and if I misspoke, Juan, tell me, but this is the one with, with Mr. Shaheen and Lundquist, correct?
That, that's correct, Commissioner. Uh, this is, this
Okay, so I've laid it out, you can, you can jump in. I've kinda laid it out what we're doing, but you can certainly jump in and reiterate anything that I've said.
Yes, sir. This is, this is similar to what we had done in County Road 33, Commissioner. And what we're doing is, we're recommending the, the execution of the donation of, between Cypress Point Capital LLC to construct County Road 43 from FM 2444, about 1,700 linear feet. And we're recommending it.
And this is, Public Works, I believe, will, will be doing this job themselves.
Yes, sir. We're, yes, sir. Yes, sir, we're looking at a couple of options. One would be Public Works, and then possibly either, if we have to, depending on the timeframe, Commissioner, so maybe somebody else to assist us also on it. But at this time, we're, we're looking at
Long as, yeah, long as it stays within the budgeted amount, we're good.
Yes, sir.
I was gonna say, do you wanna repeat the budgeted, so we have a budgeted amount? And you wanna talk about that, or just what they're donating, just to put it on the record, or?
The, the total amount is, hopefully this is right, it's $145,478.50. And then the other portion
And that's their portion, and our portion matches that portion, and those funds come from my COs. This is one of those ones, this is one of those ones, Judge, that unfortunately hadn't moved as fast as I wanted, not to anybody's fault at the county. And so that's why some of those COs have been sitting there for a while, but this will be spending some of those COs that, this has been on the book, this project's been on the books about three years, so we're just getting around to it.
2016, Commissioner? 2016, CACs?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And
Yeah, the, the total
And it's been, it's been allocated into a, it's been allocated into an area for quite some time. It's already been set up as a code. We're just, we're just, this is the donation part, and then we're gonna move forward with the work.
That's great. Okay, so can we go ahead and take, would you like that motion?
I'd make that motion, yes.
Okay, second.
I've got a motion and a second, and all those in favor, oh, excuse me, any more discussion or questions from, from Juan?
No, no, ma'am, we're good. Thanks, Judge.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Go same sign. Okay, thanks for that clarification, and, and then the next one is a supplemental agreement, number one, between ourselves, the county, and Advanced Construction Management, and this is for County Road 22 and 49. And so, Advanced Construction Management has a supplemental. Tell us about this.
Judge, Commissioners, this is just a supplemental for additional timeframe, for, for additional time. No cost, no cost change order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, got a, I think I heard a second from Commissioner Modis. And, and the only discussion I have is, so the time, does that put us still on time? In other words, is this
Construction
Time to cure a contract, or, because people always say, what, what do you mean more time? Is it taking more time, or is it just more of a contractual issue?
It's just, it's just a contractual, I'm sorry, Commissioner, go ahead.
No, it's okay. It's taking more time than we anticipated, but it's not taking more time than the contract allows for.
Got it.
And so that's why we're having you do this with ACM.
Understood. Okay.
The weather has definitely derailed this project for a great period of time, so.
Yeah, and that's what I was gonna say, Commissioner, the, the rain events have pushed the project back.
You think we'll be able to finish it this year?
Uh, we will
We better.
Yeah, yes, yes. I'm gonna say, I'm gonna say yes, weather permitting, Judge.
Yeah, weather permitting, right.
Weather permitting. All right, that's a good answer. This year is positive. All right, so how about a motion? Got a motion and a second? All, I think we did one already, sorry.
I think we did, yes, ma'am.
I'll just need to call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Go same sign. Okay, thank you, Juan, with that.
All right, thank, thank you, Judge, Commissioner.
All right, and so now we're gonna go back up to 3A2, and we're gonna get the updated calculations and discuss the updated proposal tax rate. When we do these tax rates, it'll be for the NC Farm-to-Market Road, that's Noises County Farm-to-Market, the NC Hospital District, as well as Noises County. So there's three different rates, and it's based, of course, on the certified totals that we received from the Appraisal District. Yesterday, you had that opportunity in Budget Workshop to have that discussion with our auditor. So you have, we have the new numbers, we have the new rates, and just wanted you to know that we, in this case, we do take a record vote to authorize and publish these appropriate notices. And so, again, I'm gonna ask Dale to go over the options and remind the court that this is not setting anything but what we call the ceiling. We publish that it will not exceed this amount, not that this will be the tax rate. And we do this because there's still a lot of work to be done in setting a budget, but you wanna know, and you wanna publish, that it will not go above this particular rate. And in order to do that, of course, you needed to know some of those budget challenges from yesterday, and I will defer now to Dale to go over them. I think it's important to go over them. That would be item number two. And then we'll move right into item three, which is to discuss, consider, and set this, this tax rate for these three entities.
Yes, Your Honor, what I'd like to do is, is go over the tax rates, because we provide this on, on, on August the 4th. However, there was some errors in, in the numbers we received from the Appraisal District. So I'd like to go over the, the tax rate numbers again, so all, everyone knows, we did provide you this on, in Budget Workshop yesterday, but I felt it was necessary to discuss this in court, so that everyone is aware of where the numbers are to
To go where we're at, so I'd like to go over the numbers again. So you'll see the tax rates on the property report that the county has displayed. You'll see our last year's prior year property tax rate.
Dale, stay on that mic. I, you, I'm losing your sound a little bit, please.
Yeah, I don't know what happened.
Okay, I mean, it got muted, somehow it got muted. Let me go
There you go.
So, uh, last year's property tax rate that we, we are currently presiding on, is this combined rate of our general fund, our debt service fund, and our road fund is .311483. When we got our tax calculations, we were able to calculate our no new revenue tax, our voter-approved tax, which is a maximum 3.5%, and the state law did allow us, the counties and others, to use unused increments in taxing, which means any amount of the prior year, we didn't go to the fire, the, the 3.5%. We could use those increments to be able to increase the tax. So we gave you these particular rates. So for our no new revenue tax rate, which is the second from the left, is .298982. Our maximum voter-approved tax rate, which is 3.5%, is .314205. And our total tax rate with, the maximum rate we can do this year without a, a voter requirement is .319058, and that uses the unused increment from prior year, including our 3.5% rate. For our hospital district, at, at the very bottom, you see that last year's adopted rate was .111824. Their no new revenue tax rate was .106192. We, they don't really have a 3.5% no new revenue tax, so we'll go to the voter-approved rate, which is the maximum rate they can charge, which is 8%, which is .115601. Now, how this is, how this is different from the information we provide to you was the, when the, when the Tax Appraisal District received their rates, they received several rates from an outside vendor for the refineries and all the, the mechanical stuff on the, along the port, and they were able to find that there was a
I think you need to load the other one that Lisa sent. This has got a different timestamp. The numbers are different.
That's fine. No, use that one.
Use that?
Yeah. I could maybe use that one on the proposal.
What happened with the audio?
I don't wanna go on the screen.
I was just talking with Connie, there's a little, little difference on, on what she has and, and, and what, what I'm going through, but, but there was a small, small changes for, for that, as we, we talked about. The voters-approved is, is there, the, on the calculations on the rate, the, the main problem was the Tax Office, or the Appraisal District, was using $150 million as regular property, however, it should've been new property. So when we gave you the numbers on the 4th, we had mentioned that our new property valuation was a market value of around $420,000, $420 million. However, the true number is a $642 million new property, so that definitely changed our values. That's why I wanted to make sure we are all aware of the, the rates and calculations. You should have these values calculated as part of your, part of your, your packets that you have. We can go over any of them that you'd like to have, but those are our, our current tax rate evaluations, as was presented on August 4th with a slight value calculation.
Somebody's whispering or something, and it's really bleeding over Dale, for me at least.
Connie, and, and we're, we're discussing this, sorry. Uh, we, we, these are just, these are just the, the new rates with the new information from the, from the tax, from the Appraisal District. So again, the no new revenue tax rate is .298982. The 3.5%, which is our voter-approved rate, is .314205. And if we use the unused increments, and this is using 100% of that unused increment, it's .319058, and those are the rates that we had, based on the calculations of what the Appraisal District has provided to you. That's the information we have for the rates, for the fund balances that we need to provide you for the fund balances. Connie, can you provide the fund balances?
Yes.
And wait, what is your, and what's your, and wait a minute, what's your proposed rate, Dale, from yesterday, again?
We're, we're, we're just, we're just updating the calculations. When we, once we get to the proposed, we'll talk about the proposed. Right now, I'm just giving you the new rates.
All right, all right, that's fine, that's fine.
On the list, you'll see on the screen, which is our, our estimated fund balances for the year. Now, these rates are estimates, these could change throughout the, the, once we get our actual numbers in. This is our best estimates that we have at the time. Our fund balances for the general fund is $27,459,463. For our road and bridge fund is $1,779,226. Our special revenue fund is $20,525,85. Our stadium fairgrounds is $2,158,160. Our law library is $38,232. Our airport fund is $147,216. Our inland parks is $249,49. Our coastal parks is $1,099,210. And our debt service and interest and sinking fund is $3,541,287, $227. So our total estimated fund balance from all of our operating funds is $56,996,928, and that's a submission of our, our rates, our updated rates, and our estimated fund balances of, now we can, can continue on for the, the next item, number three, to discuss our proposal of where we expect our rates to be, if we're ready to begin.
That's the only page I have.
That's the one that Lisa gave you.
The other one? Oh, that Lisa gave me?
Yeah.
Okay, hang on, I gotta
I mailed it to the judge and Commissioner
Did you mail it to Connie?
Yes, I mailed it, Connie, too. I mailed it to all Commissioners' courts, to the judge and Commissioner Chesney, both have it in there, we mailed it.
Now, during our, our conversation, that we went through our budget hearings yesterday, there was a, still a, a, a discussion on our, our $1,005 for our payment to Bank of America. I did some research through our contract with ABM and Bank of America, there is a small amount of, of savings possible. I ought to convert to the county attorney of when that is able to be done. If I believe the numbers were right, it's around $600,000 worth of possible savings that could possibly be there. But again, I, it, it says the first year, but is that the first year of actual construction, or is it the first year when it begins? No.
All right. Well, I only have two, and each one's only got one sheet.
So, so if we, we might be able to lower that $1.5 million down from, to about, around $900,000, so, which we still need around $2 million of, of funds. So that might change a little bit of the balances where we wanna go, but if we still wanna consider some of our other valuations of whether we wanna do possible coastal increases, or possible reclassifications, or possible new, new, new staff, I'm still at the value of saying, because we're only setting a ceiling today, we're not, we're not adopting a rate, we're only saying this is what our maximum rate can be, and we can definitely go down from that as we go to the process of, of adopting our, our budget on September the 8th. So with that particular item, I'm proposing that we adopt a rate, which is at, at the maximum rate of 3.5% plus the unused increment. So I'm proposing a rate of .316569, with the general fund being .268072. Our debt service rate is the same as last year, is .4044752. And our road fund is .003745. Again, the maximum rate I'm proposing at this time is .316569. And it's on this item as well, the hospital district had their meeting yesterday, and they're proposing a rates, the, the same rate as they had from last year, is .111824, and that is a 5.3% above the no new revenue tax. So again, the proposal that I'm presenting to you today is a rate, again, this is the ceiling, .316569 for the county, and .111824 for the farm-to-market, for the hospital district. And that's the rates I'm proposing at this time.
Okay, thank you, Dale, and I, I concur with, with our, with your recommendation for Noises County and the farm-to-market. I will say, for the hospital district, the same rate might be exactly where we wind up, but I think it's a mistake in the middle of a healthcare crisis and surge, where you have unbelievable uncertainty not to set the ceiling at the max, because you don't know what's gonna happen in the next seven days here. And again, I, I think that might be exactly where we wind up, that 5% above, you know, whatever the hospital just, I don't have it in front of me, but is it .311824, maybe?
Yes, that is correct. That's the same rate they, they had prior, in the prior year, that's correct, Your Honor.
Right, and that might be exactly where we wind up, but I think it's a mistake. It's like saying, we've got a hurricane, and it's literally a Cat 5, and it's like 30 miles offshore. You know, does anybody wanna make some preparations?
Again, these are only, these are only
I just think that we should do that to give us maximum flexibility.
And yes, these are only the proposals, these are not, we're not asking to adopt these rates today. These are just where, this is as high as we can go without having multiple public hearings that we, we see these rates. So these are just the ceiling of the rates we're proposing at this time.
Yeah, hear you. So Johnny's on, I'm gonna ask Johnny, just
Judge, I think he goes, Judge, I think he, I think he is, I think Dale is recommending today
Okay.
The highest rate he can
My bad.
For the hospital district, right, John? Dale, is that what she said?
I know the hospital district can go up to a maximum of 8%, which is .115601. I talked to Johnny yesterday after his proposal, and, and he's saying that, that they can definitely work with the same rate they had last year, .111824. But Johnny is available on, on, online at this time. I'll let him go ahead and, and, and get into the discussion.
Good morning, Judge, can I proceed?
You bet.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Well, hang, hang on one second, I'm confused then, Dale, because I thought what you said, the hospital district for 2021 was .11241, and that you're proposing .11824. Is that not an increase, or did I read that wrong, or did I hear that wrong?
The, the current no new revenue tax is .106192 for the hospital district. That would be their no new revenue tax, which is a no new taxes. They're proposing a rate of .111824, which is similar to the same rate as they had last[1734.08] They're proposing a rate of .111824, which is similar to the same rate as they had last year. That is a 5.3% increase above that no new revenue tax rate. So they're proposing a rate of .111824. Again, that is 5%. They can go as high as 8%, which is .115601.
No, but what I'm saying is, isn't their current rate, 1.112? Or wait, what did I hear?
Scroll down, let me have Connie scroll down so you can see it. It's, there you go, see it?
Their current rate at the very top is .111824. That's the current rate they're using now.
Okay, I apologize, Judge, I misspoke.
Yeah.
.1, I apologize, Judge, I misspoke to you.
Yeah, don't worry.
I wrote it down wrong, my bad, my bad.
You just had the eight and the one reversed, no problem.
Right, that's fine. Alright, go ahead. Thank you. Go ahead, Johnny.
Excuse me, good morning, Commissioners. Commissioners, in light of our conversation yesterday, and to backtrack just a moment from that to talk about the developments with COVID in the community. There, all the comments and stuff that have been made today, I think warrant the consideration of the 8% rate, at least at this meeting, for leaving us in a position to deal with the unknowns that are probably going to crop up in the next two or three weeks before y'all take a final vote on the district's tax rate. If the district doesn't have any, you know, new expenditures and stuff, the rate that I had talked about yesterday that Dale described would be a rate that would basically get the district to a point that its budget's balanced for the first time in many years. As y'all know, we haven't had the, we've had the effective tax rate in place for a long time. The 3% increase in revenues the court provided for last year moved us a lot further along toward balancing the district's budget. We still continue from the graph I showed you yesterday to operate the district at a situation where we continue to draw down our funds. But just to summarize for purposes of today's vote, because you're going to be setting the maximum amount. I would reestablish my request then to do it at the high, at the 8% or whatever rate that falls just below some trigger mechanism for today. And then when we come back and do the district's tax rate later in August or September, early September, that we would consider that rate or some rate below that.
Judge, I just have a question for Johnny respectfully. Is that the position of your board? Because your board is who would make the decision for you to request that, so I would like to know if the board has approved that and voted on that? Or you're just making that change, and I don't mean this rudely, but on the fly, based on what you've heard today, which is legitimate information. But before you make that request, is this your board's position?
Commissioner, I don't know that we're voting on the rate going forward for next year, but the board will have a workshop probably in about two weeks. We came to y'all quickly because you all needed to take this vote on the ceiling rate. And so we put together our budget. We certainly will go through a workshop with them. And if they feel that the rate, they'll have input on the rate. They have given me comments in the past several months regarding the district's rate. And they would certainly like to try to have as much money as we can possibly coming into the district so that we can balance the district's operations. And that's why the rate I talked to you about yesterday was what was there. To certainly understand the political realities and stuff of that. But when we come back to Commissioners, we will have a rate that the board is comfortable with. But those numbers I gave you yesterday and today are consistent with their instructions to me over the last two or three months regarding our budget.
Well, your instructions to Dale yesterday were to say 111824. Your instructions today are, wait a minute, never mind, I've heard some new information, I'm going to go up. So my question to you again is, and I think you answered it with a roundabout no, but I don't want to put words in your mouth. But you don't know what your board's position is on your request today. Is that a fair statement?
Yes, Commissioner, me, our request today is, I understand this meeting is to set the maximum rate and that the rate that the court would adopt later in August or September could be that rate or a lesser rate. I don't want to box the position, put box the district into a position of having a rate set at this meeting that constrains the ability of the district to have funds sufficient to deal with the the emerging needs of COVID. I mean, the COVID needs, I probably neglected to bring that up yesterday, Commissioner, they didn't, they didn't just pop up this morning. I mean, they've been out there now and the numbers are going up. And I think the news conference and the information we're going to receive later today tells that story. So I'm okay with asking you all to consider the ceiling at this meeting, knowing that there is a subsequent meeting where the final rate will be set. And we'll all have an opportunity to have additional information in hand. I'm just, at this point, Commissioner, I'm not trying to throw a slider here or curveballs or anything. I just don't want to leave the district in a position where we can't get enough revenue in from the new tax rate at a later meeting. That's all.
And I understand that, Johnny, but what you're saying, which again, I appreciate, your board is not weighed in on this position. So this is not something that you can say that the board does or doesn't support. And they might support this, but you haven't polled your board, you don't know whether they support it. This is just you acting in the best interest of the board, what you believe, but you don't know that your board does or does not support that. Would that be correct? Simple question.
No. And the reason for that is, Commissioner, I just want to underline again, that their instructions to me in the last two or three meetings regarding our budget were to do everything we can to get as much revenue as the court feels comfortable with coming into the district. The board is especially concerned, especially concerned about continuing to operate the district as a deficit. And we, that charter showed me yesterday, shows our consolidated fund balance continuing to decline.
So you're saying, are you saying the board supports this rate? Yes or no, Johnny? I mean, it's a simple, I give what you're saying, but if they support it, that's all I need to know. If they don't support it, that's what I need to know. If they haven't taken a formal position on this proposed rate, then you ought to be able to answer that. That's all I'm asking. And that's all I'm asking. If they don't, if they, if you believe they support it, just say yes, they support this rate that you're proposing today.
Commissioner, what I can tell you is that they likely will support it. These tax rates were not available to the board in the past two or three months for them to talk about. And as I said, their instructions to me have been to do everything we can to improve the district's flow, cash flow from tax revenues. And consistent with that concept, I believe that they would be supportive of this rate. But have they seen this rate? No. These schedules weren't available to them. They weren't available to us. They weren't available to you in the past two or three months when the board talked to me about it. But consistent with what they instructed me to work toward, this 8% ceiling would be that, knowing that it is only a ceiling vote. And it is not the final vote on what the needs of the district is going to be, which y'all will take in a few weeks.
But it is a vote. Today's vote is a vote to indicate whether or not the court and the hospital district board are comfortable with tax increases. Because if we vote for this rate, it will assure the public that there is probably, probably, not for sure, but probably a tax increase coming. And I just want to make sure that we're being transparent about it because that's what this is today. It is just a ceiling, but it is an indication and a signal that potentially a tax increase is coming to Oasis County residents from the hospital district and the Commissioners' Court. So as long as you're comfortable making your representations that you think the board's okay with this, that's all I was asking.
Can we get that? You know, just recall that you would, that the, that the hospital district has, we've been a good citizen working with the county. We stood up a mental health department. We stepped up for COVID. I mean, every time that the county has come to us in the past year, the studies with Meadows, Accenture, THI, I mean, all those things, the district.
I don't question them. I've applauded your efforts. I've applauded your efforts on some things and some things, you know, y'all have done that maybe I would or wouldn't have done, but that's, I don't micromanage your board and that's not what this is about. I'm just making, all I asked was, is your board comfortable advocating for a potential tax increase in this rate? You've answered it. I'm good. Thank you.
Could we get that document up again on the shared screen? It's the hospital district, so we could get all those numbers again. Just one more time, Connie. There you go. Because those ones, I actually think, I want to make sure I wrote them down. So last year's rate was 111824. And the one that we're looking at is exactly the same. 111824 represents that 5.3. So what we're saying is, is that if the ceiling is set at 115601, the only thing that we're signaling is that that is the ceiling. That's all that that commentary is. Because the rate that was given as the rate that would be suitable by the board and by Johnny is the exact same as this year. So the only signal I see is the hospital district is amazing because they've come to us and said, we think we can do with the exact same rate as we had last year, despite the fact that we've had the worst health crisis known to mankind in over 100 years. So that's the signal. The only reason the ceiling should be given is because what are you going to do in the next two, three weeks? If you see that you have 500 more people in the hospital? And all I'm saying is, is that it's called, it's just a protection. But what I see the signal is, is unbelievable news that the board, through their executive director, has said that 5.3% above the no new revenue tax rate gives you exactly what the citizens got last year. And that's where their head is. I'm just saying, as an emergency manager, that you should at least consider, since the ceiling means nothing except for that this is a rate that you cannot go above for, that exists. And that you give yourself that wiggle room because you know that you, I think it's almost scary to know that you've got this horrible wave of death coming and, you know, that we're not, we're not thinking about that. And that's what's, what we're worried about, is that there's a destruction. I believe we can turn the tide, by the way. I believe we can. But it's going to take a Herculean effort. And that's why I mentioned that, Commissioner Chesney, not because I don't agree or think that the same rate that last year is not a good rate to consider for the court, but rather that the ceiling is just a protection and that you don't go over that rate. But it's just the voter approved rate. So it's not like some extraordinary rate. It's the rate the legislature gives us that says, this is your ceiling. And all I'm saying is, I think that's smart to keep it. And I don't think the taxpayers should expect anything except for what this document shows, which is that they're coming in and the auditor's recommending the same exact rate as last year. Just a thought, just a different thought.
I'm in favor of.
Well, just go on, you know, as they say, enough said.
Judge, I just want to share, I'm in favor of.
Go ahead, go ahead, John.
Setting the ceiling. I mean, we could even still decide it. You know, no new revenue. And so I don't have a problem setting the ceiling so that we can work down from there. I know Commissioner Chesney is sharing his concerns and, you know, what the message it sends. And I think that's why the legislation was changed and cleared up the way that it was, so that the public exactly knows what, you know, the possible intentions are. It doesn't mean that that's where we're going to go. But we do not want this to be a surprise or for someone not to understand that with all the requests that we have, we cannot cut ourselves short with the revenue needed to address all these needs. Now, we're going to, I know, push and pull and haggle all we can at the very end to see where we stand. But I do not have a problem today, at least, setting our ceiling and then putting ourselves and staff to task to really bring this down as much as possible, to have as little impact on the taxpayers as possible, so.
Thanks, Commissioner Modis. Anybody else? Okay, if there are nothing, if there are no other comments or questions, what we're going to do is, I'm going to ask for a motion to first tackle the Oasis County rate. And I did write everything down, but I do like that cheat sheet up. It does help. Connie, you'll bring it back. It's got all those numbers, perfect.
Scroll up to Connie for the county.
There we go.
There's the county.
And so the rate that is being suggested by the auditor is the one that I'm looking to have a motion on. And the amount is, Dale, would you repeat it, the one that you recommended again?
Yes, Your Honor, the total amount that we're proposing at this time, which is the maximum ceiling, which is the three and a half percent voter approved rate, using 100% of the unused increment, is a total .316569, with the general fund being .268072. The debt service being .044752, and the road fund being .00375. Again, the total proposed tax rate, .316569.
And this is a ceiling only, and that would be my motion, and I would look for a second.
Second.
Okay, and then the law requires me to take a roll call vote. And so I will start with Commissioner Hernandez.
No new tax revenue.
I'm so sorry, could you get that right really close?
I was a no, Judge.
What did he say?
No.
He said no.
Okay, Commissioner Chesney?
No.
Okay, Commissioner Modis?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, Commissioner Gonzalez?
No.
Okay, no? Okay, and I am an aye. Okay, so what is the amount that, is there a motion to, since we have not, this is a ceiling. So the ceiling would be the, the next amount would be, for me, not the entire unused increment. Again, this is a ceiling, not where we're going to set the rate. What is the motion then? I could go to point a total, a general fund of .268071. Just take it down a notch here. I'm just wondering what this court, if it wants to entertain a discussion as to what ceiling you think you would like to have. Commissioner Hernandez, what ceiling are you considering? This is a ceiling. This is not the rate. This is what we would not go above.
Well, Judge, at this point, I'm really not even considering anything right now because we'll keep it as it is. We are going to have further discussion on this, aren't we?
No, sir. Today we have to set the proposed rate. That's the purpose of today's meeting, is that we need to set a proposed rate that we would not go above. And then we will have the opportunity to figure out what our real rate is. Once, remember, we just got the numbers yesterday. So the purpose is, is to give you maximum opportunity to work with the numbers and see how you're going to achieve your budget that you desire with all of the things that you need inside of it. And the rate gives you that maximum dollars to consider. So that is absolutely critical that we do set that. So if you do not believe that the auditor's recommended rate is the correct one, what rate do you recommend for us here today for the ceiling?
Judge, I have to apologize, but my glasses don't help me at all. What is the auditor?
And if you could get that mic really close to you.
Said I have to apologize.
You said I have to apologize, and then I couldn't hear.
My glasses don't help me at all. If they can enlarge the numbers.
You scroll up to Connie.
Okay, so.
Hear him.
Did you hear him, Commissioner?
No.
I did, I could not hear him, sorry.
I couldn't either. Say it again. Give him the handheld, maybe. It really works great, the handheld.
The handheld's good. Do you have it, Connie?
What I'm looking for, Commissioner, while they're passing you the handheld mic, is I'm looking for the amount that you would recommend that this court receive a ceiling. In other words, the rate has to be not over a certain amount. You've been given what it was last year. You know what that kind of money would bring in. You know what the no new revenue would bring in. It would not bring in any amount of money that would even cover our budget challenges. You've been given the three and a half percent, which does not cover our budget challenges. And then you've been given the voter approved, which does cover all our budget challenges. And so I'm wondering where at least you're in between so we could have a good discussion about it.
I want to.
Where is your starting point?
Well, I want to start at what we had last year.
Okay, so where we had last year would bring in $3.7 million. And I just want to make sure that you understand that that will not meet our budget challenges.
I understand.
Okay, so we will not, you will, all those salary increases that you want will not be included, neither with the limited reclasses nor with the new positions. Are you aware of that? Are you aware of that?
Judge, there's other commissioners that are going to speak out, I'm sure, though.
Oh, no, I know, I know, I'm just wanting to make sure-
I'm aware, Judge.
-that you understand that, since-
I'm aware, Judge.
Do, just, is, yes, I can move on if you understand that?
Yes, ma'am, I do.
Okay, because it's in conflict with what you've said before. We'll move on. Commissioner Gonzalez, what is your-
I'm going to go with the no revenue tax.
The no new revenue tax of a million dollars?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes?
Yes, ma'am.
And so, and how would you achieve-
Well, I'm going to, I'm working on a plan, Judge, how we can do it, there's ways to do it, and I'm, you know-
So, but you would put the ceiling today at the no new revenue, therefore-
Right.
-there would be no way to, to address the budget challenges?
Well, there are, there are ways, I'm just, I'm working on those now, that, I think, that, that thing we can find with money, and we're talking about probably-
I cannot understand the words you're saying.
We're talking about maybe $2 million.
Someone please pass that mic to him.
Two million. But I, I'm doing, I'm doing, I think it's your mic, Judge, you know? It's not my mic, I think it's your mic.
No, it's the mic inside the courtroom, we cannot hear you.
Okay. Yeah. Okay, I'm just, I'm staying with the no revenue tax.
Yeah, we can sound, now we can hear you perfectly.
You know, and I think that we've, there's ways to find the money that we need, if we, you know, we start cutting back in some areas, and I'm working on that right now, to create a recommendation for our next time, how we can bring those monies.
Yeah, we welcome that, we welcome that, but there, we're setting a ceiling today, so if you're wrong-
That's my ceiling right now, Judge.
That's your ceiling?
Yes, ma'am.
The no new revenue tax rate?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and what about Commissioner Modis? What is your opinion on setting the ceiling here today?
Well, I always want to operate with the, with the highest ceiling, and like I said, work it down. I, I don't know if there's consensus, I mean, if there's consensus, I mean, there's, there's no, I'm not going to fight consensus on this item. If some, if the commissioners or majority feel that there's a budget that they're going to work through, then, then that's what we're going to have to work through. I mean, I, I, I feel that we need to give ourselves every opportunity to, to look at all the funding, and then, like I said, we, we can always decide no new at the, at the very end, is that right, Dale?
That's correct.
So, that, that's just my concern, is that if we can get to that point, why do we set that today? I, I just worry about that. And if we do need to change it, then we go through a lot more meetings, because we would have to repost these meetings and go through a, a similar timeframe that we already have, is that correct?
Yes, Your Honor, yes, like Commissioner, if we do set the, a rate, and we cut, so the ceiling rate, anything above that would require multiple public hearings and multiple, multiple postings, which would push our proposal and our adoption past September the 8th.
That, that would just be my only concern, is that, I, I hear what the court, or at least I think the majority of the court has already kind of indicated. I would just ask if today you set the, you know, the ceiling, and if we still, you know, if the majority still feel in the end that we want to tackle that no new revenue rate, then, then we can work it down. But I think if, if today we could at least allow to look at it. Now, I, I'm, I'm sure, and I'm, I'm thankful to hear that there are plans in place to try to work through this, we're, we're going to have to really make some tough choices, and, and the proposals that we had are not going to all be, be funded. But that would be my ask, Judge, is, you know, I'm, I'm going to support what the consensus says, just because if I vote against it, it doesn't matter, it, it's, I think it's, it's still three votes in favor of the no new rate, but that's why I say today, that, that's why today is, is set, that's why the legislation was changed, the, the wording and, and the description of these items, you know, what used to be effective, are now, you know, voter-approved, no new revenue rates. So I would just hope that we would be able to set the ceiling today, and then if, if, you know, if we, I think we have an idea, this is where we are, are going to, and then we can work towards that. I, I just don't want to start off where, where we're at that rate. But like I said, I'm, I'm going to yield with what the, the majority of this court says and goes for, and, and we'll, we'll have to work from there, but, you know, I already indicated earlier where I was at on the vote, on, on the losing end, because I felt that setting a, a ceiling is appropriate, and what most taxing entities do, you, you don't find this happening in other counties, but that have extremely huge growth, that's when you're really kind of able to, to work through this. And we've, because of COVID and just our natural history, we always kind of just chug along at a decent rate of growth. So, the, those are my concerns when we look at the no new revenue rate, that there, there's a lot that's going to be cut and left behind, but, like I said, I'm, I'm not going to, I'm not going to fight that.
Yeah, and I would love to do the no new revenue tax rate after we have a real, robust discussion of what people's plans are, and that's going to take place after we have some discussions about our American Relief Plan Act funds inside executive session. But the purpose of today was to make certain that we protect this county and not drain its cash reserves, which we've worked so hard to build up. And when you see that your auditor showcases $2.7 million, and your revenue rate would bring in $1 million, you're going to be firing all the people whose positions you changed this year, because there's no other way, and there is two points at minimum, at minimum, that's if you give nobody any of the new, limited new positions, nobody gets any reclasses, nobody gets, there's no Veterans Treatment Court Coordinator, there's no, any of the services that we have to provide by law or by contract. And I'm just wondering what your solution is, because what you're going to do is hamstring the court to a, to a revenue that you can still get to if you actually propose a plan. But to say to the citizens today, I have no plan, and I'm going to make certain that we lose our cash reserves, is, is not consensus. That's just, that's just something that, that you, someone has to articulate why you would not at least go to the same rate that we had before, or the 3.5% as the ceiling. But to say, I have no plan, but I was going to think about it-
Judge, can I say something?
And your auditor's told you you have $2.7 million, bare bones minimum, and you're not going to account for that? That seems-
Judge, can I say something?
That's something that should be answered by this commissioner's court today, and, and I'd like to ask Dale-
Let me try to answer for you, Judge.
Okay, what is the answer?
The answer, you know, the thing is, I was, to me, we talk about our, draining our funds and all that, but, you know, we've got to think about the people, too. People are hurting already, you know, the people, the, the small business, you know, the renters, you know, the people that, restaurants, I mean, they're, they're really hurting. People have called and said, you know, I can't afford any more taxes, you know, I can't afford any more, you know, so, I mean, it's not just about us, it's about the people out there that we have to take care of, too, you know, that we have to really be conscious of what, what, how, what they're going through. I mean, if ours goes down, and we still be able to function, that's fine, but they're not going to be able to function if theirs goes down. So, you know, if you want to just, something to talk about then, I mean, I'll go ahead and, and do the prior year adoption rate, just for now, to talk about it, but, you know, I'm, you know where I stand on this right now, but, but I'll go back just to put a ceiling in the prior year adopt, adoption rate.
Okay, so, is, if that is a, a motion, that prior adopted rate is .311483, and it would bring in, Dale, $3.7 million?
I believe that's correct.
Okay, and just so we know, the voter-approved rate would have brought in 3.8 million, is that correct?
I believe you're right.
Yes?
Yes, I believe you're correct.
3.8, okay. And so, is that your ceiling that you are interested in making a motion towards?
Yes, ma'am.
I, I second that, Judge.
All right, I'll have a motion in a second, and I will take that record vote. Since you made the motion, I'll start with you, Commissioner Gonzalez.
Prior year, adopted prior year rate.
I'm sorry, I just-
Adopted prior year rate?
Yes, but is it, I just, do you vote in favor?
Yes, it was my motion, yes.
If someone could help me, that-
Said yes, it was my motion.
Yes, okay, thank you. Okay, and Commissioner Modis?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, Commissioner Hernandez?
Aye.
Okay, Commissioner Chesney?
No.
Okay, and myself, aye. Okay, so we have set a prior, I'm sorry, prior, we've set the proposed rate as the prior adopted rate, and, and that, Dale, is a total of .311483. So that's going to be as high as we go, and that money is now set in stone, so now you can get to work on your budget plan, and hopefully we will have a, a time together very soon, so we can see how we're going to address a lot more needs than, than we'll have dollars for. At this time, I will move on-
Excuse me, Dale, do you have, that was a 3.7?
What's that question?
What's the, the, the funds, what's the, the revenues, 3.7?
Yes?
The revenue for the general fund, using the prior year rate, will be $3,725,861 for the general fund. The debt service will be the prior year's rate, which will be using 700, I don't have that number, I left it at the table, it's using approximately 700,000 worth of debt service fund balance. And then the road fund, prior year rate actually exceeds the voter-approved rate, and the prior year road fund rate is .003769, for a total tax rate of .311483. We could, so that you do not exceed the voter-approved rate and require an election, move that variance of the increase up to the general fund, so you have the same total rate without requiring an election? If y'all would approve to do so, but that would require a vote.
Say that again, Lisa, say that again.
The voter-approved tax rate, hold on, just a second, let me go grab my other-
But we, but we didn't approve that.
We didn't do that one.
We, we, we combined, the, the total rate of, the, the prior year's rate is .311483. If you look at the third row from the, from the left, you'll see the maximum rate for the road fund is .003745, so we cannot exceed that rate. So to, to go back to the, the, the prior year, if, if you want to use the, the prior year rates for the general fund, the debt service fund, and adding the road fund at the maximum rate, it'd be .311189, and not 483, so it'd be a slight decrease of the rate, if that's the, the court's intention.
So you could keep the total tax rate at .311483, and move the variance up to the general fund? It'll give you a little bit more room in the general fund, and your total tax rate won't change. But if you do adopt the tax rate exactly as it was last year, you would be requiring an election.
We cannot exceed the maximum, we're back for the road fund.
Yeah, I understand that. I understand that. So what, I think what, if what you're saying is, Lisa, we, I don't think anybody, and I don't, I was on the losing side, I don't think anybody wants to have an election. So if what you're saying is, you're, you're saying Commissioner Gonzalez wants to keep the overall rate the way it was last year, which was the 311483, as does the majority of the court, you're saying move a little bit of the road fund up to the general fund to avoid the election in the road fund?
To change it, to change it, yeah.
The total rate stays the same, but there'd be five, five different rates.
Right. And it doesn't change the 311483. I, I think whatever we can do to avoid an election is certainly something.
If we do choose that one, then we go, that's what we do, right? Can we do that?
Look, all she have, all we have to do is do what Lisa's saying, and just shave off the road fund-
It'd be a decrease to the road fund. It'd be a decrease to the road fund of .000024, and an increase by the same to the general fund, so that the general fund rate would be .262986, instead of .262962.
Right.
And I, I think the best way's going to be then is to withdraw the prior motion, let Commissioner Gonzalez amend it and revote it, to make sure it's clear for the record, would be my suggestion.
It'll show those numbers. I, I withdraw my motion and to-
The motion, motion still be that there were, we're maintaining the entire, the, the entire proposed rate is .311483, with a maximum road fund rate of .003745, the debt service rate of .044752, and the general fund rate, what the ballot needs to make up the difference.
Okay, do I hear a second, do we withdraw the second?
Second.
Because I'll make a motion now to show the actual numbers.
And we'll have you those numbers very soon to show, show, so we'll provide that to the tax office.
Motion is second.
Now, let me, let me make them, let me make the motion, so I can see if I can get it clear here. The, just so everybody knows, the, the rate doesn't change, so our motion is valid, okay? The, the interesting thing is, is that what you're saying is that you need to specifically describe the general fund, debt service fund, and road fund. The total tax rate is .311483, the same as last year as the ceiling. And now we're going to describe with specificity the makeup of the .311483. And I'm going to let-
Judge, hold on real quick. I, I think technically the motion is incorrect, because his motion was to adopt the prior rate, which included that road fund as in the prior rate as calculated, so I think you could be right, and I think technically it could be wrong, so I just, I would just ask that maybe we-
Okay.
-do a draw and redo it, but I mean, it's, it's your call, I mean-
I mean, I'm not, I, I, just let me ask the county attorney, because I think-
Yeah, that might be.
Let me ask the county attorney.
That's a good point, I'll defer to her.
Yeah.
Since it was specified that we can't do the road rate as done exactly as last year, it would be probably a good idea, better practice to go ahead and re-specify.
I've got the rate numbers, if, if we have, for, for consideration. The total rate is .311483. The general fund is .262986. The debt service rate is .044752, and the road fund is a maximum .003745, which a total .311483, which is the prior year rate. That's the rate we are now proposing.
And that's my motion to go ahead and approve those numbers?
Second.
So do we need to, do we need to withdraw that prior motion?
We did.
But you needed to- Can we just amend, Jenny?
Withdraw.
You could amend it, everybody-
This is a record vote, Jenny, what do you think we need to do? Do we just withdraw the prior one?
Yeah, we already did.
Well, but you didn't vote on withdrawing it.
All right. So he's going to withdraw the motion, is there a second for the withdrawal?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Post same sign. Okay, and now your new motion, and I heard Commissioner Modis with a second? Is that correct?
I, I did, Hernandez, yeah, whoever.
Commissioner Modis made a second.
All right, and then the record vote, Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Commissioner Modis?
Aye.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Aye.
Commissioner Chesney?
No.
Barbara Canales, myself, aye. Okay, as they say, the ayes have it. So we now have the rates correct, as were articulated on the record, they total .311483, that will be our ceiling, and they also are reflected individually, as Dale read them and as the motion reflects.
Your Honor, now we must proceed to the hospital district.
We'll move on to the hospital district. Okay, and so, is there a, a motion to approve the ceiling rate for the hospital district at, at this time? Okay, well, I will make this, I will make the motion to go to the voter-approved tax rate as a ceiling only, and that is .15, sorry, 115601, and would look for a second. Okay, seeing that there's no second- Okay, seeing that there's no second, we'll go to the next one, the 5.3%... Commissioner Modest, second.
Commissioner Modest, a second to your, your motion.
Oh, Modest, I'm sorry. It's these, it's these, terrible audio for me, and I apologize this morning.
I didn't hear it either, Judge.
Okay, feel better. Thanks, Brent. I was going to go borrow some hearing aids here. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Commissioner, this must be a record vote as well.
This was a record vote. Thank you so much. Okay, Commissioner Hernandez?
No.
Okay, Commissioner Modest?
Aye.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Aye.
Aye.
Commissioner, Commissioner Chesney?
No.
Barbara Canales, aye. Okay, what was the vote on that? Because it's very hard to hear.
There was a 3-2 vote for yes, Your Honor.
All right, okay, so we can move on to executive session at this time.
Wait, what was the rate? Sorry, what was the rate that ended up being the hospital district one?
115601 as the ceiling.
Okay.
Okay. Okay.
And that was, and that was the one that went up 5%? I'm sorry, I'm...
Actually, actually, that's, that's the voter-approved, so that's 8%. For hospital district, voter-approved's 8. What they, what they want us to consider is the 5.
But wait, so what, what, the ceiling, we approved an 8% increase in?
Yeah, that's the voter-approved tax rate for any hospital district. It's 8%. Like ours is 3.5. For hospital districts, it's 8.
But that's not...
Okay, so we approved the, we approved an 8% ceiling tax rate for the hospital district, not the proposed one, right? I'm just making sure I've got this. I couldn't, like you said, I couldn't hear as well.
That's correct. That's correct. And then we will come back at budget time and know that somewhere at that rate or below is what this court could approve. We cannot go higher than that. That is the ceiling.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, and now, now we've got executive session. We're just going very quickly today. And so, I'm getting notice at this time that commissioners' court will go into, has elected to go into executive session, authorized by the provisions of the Open Meeting Act, check to 551 of the Texas Government Code. And we do so in accordance with the government's sections, Vernon's Texas Code, 551, 71, 72, 73, 74, 745, 7686, and 87, regarding matters relating to litigation, real property, gifts, personnel, county advisory bodies, security devices, economic development, and any other matters that may be discussed in executive session. We are, let's see, we'll come back and take any action as we deem necessary. It's 11:47 a.m. If you would clear the courtroom for me, please, and ask only that commissioners or county attorney and any resources that we need stay in the room. And we will call the clerk as soon as we can to let you know. If I had to guess, I'd say, you know, 30 minutes or less, but it's just an educated guess. Thank you. And I've gabbled us out. Okay, grateful. Okay, so, we are back on the record. At home, that gavel sounds so loud. 12:28 p.m., we are back on the record. We are out of executive session, and we have no action to take at this time. I therefore move for adjournments in memory and would ask if there are any at this time. Okay, hearing none. I just want to adjourn in memory. It was such a terrible day yesterday. We had nine deaths in Neoces County due to COVID-19. Things are getting very grave. I'm going to ask for prayers. Prayers, please lift us up in prayer, all of Neoces County, South Texas, the state of Texas, and our country, but especially Texas, because we are a unvaccinated state, 50% of us, and it's really resulting in terrible things here, terrible tragedies. I, the stories are just so compelling, and I just ask for prayers for those families that have lost loved ones. And that is my, my adjournment in memory today, and we are concluded, gabbling us out officially at 12:29 p.m., and I will see you guys back in court on Monday, August the 16th. Thank you so much. Yes.
Judge, I'm sorry, quick comment.
Of course. No worries.
I just want to thank the court and everyone who reached out in regards to my mom. I'm greatly appreciative. Commissioner Modest and Judge Canales, thank you for attending the service. I appreciate others from the county who also attended, and I just wanted to say, I know everybody reached out. I got beautiful flowers and plant from Commissioner Hernandez and Gonzalez, and everyone very, very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Judge, I, I just remembered. We almost forgot.
Yes, sir.
We need authorization to publish notices.
Oh, yes, publish the notice. Oh, my goodness, Tyner, and you even text me. I'm so sorry about that. Let me get back on here. I got to get back on video. One more second. Commissioners, a piece of important housekeeping on item 3A3. You'll notice that we also need to authorize publishing appropriate notices for the action that we took. Could I get a motion, please, for the publishing of the notices regarding the, the ceiling tax rates?
Some of...
And a second, please.
Second.
And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you. Now you have authority to publish those notices. Grateful, and again, as I said, we'll conclude by seeing you on Monday. Logging out. 12:31 p.m. for the clerk.